Well, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the August 13th, 2025 Open Spaceport of Trustees meeting. And we are going to start with a call to order, which just called us to order, and a roll call. So who's here tonight from the board?
I'm here, Michelle Astrea.
Okay.
Brady Robinson.
And I'm Harmon Zuckerman. And we have two absences tonight, but we do have a quorum. So given that it's a special night, and we have members of the Junior Ranger Program here, we're not going to follow our normal meeting agenda. And Dan, I'm going to turn it over to you to do some introductions.
Yeah, a very special evening, one of our favorites of the year. It's a chance for us to hear from Junior Ranger participants. And as Lee Michael and Natasha will probably relay to us, it's a very special year for the Junior Ranger Program. I won't spoil what number the anniversary is, but it happens to correspond with my birthday. So once you hear from them, then you know how old I am, and then you can gasp and say, wow, I didn't know. With that, I think I'm turning things over to Natasha Steinman, our Senior Manager for our Community Outreach.
That one. Great. Thank you, Dan. Hello, trustees. Again, thank you for having us. We always look forward to this every year. And tonight, I have a special passing of the baton to the next Program Manager. You all have seen me before. I've presented and brought Junior Rangers in for the last several years. But I'm actually in a new role, and my role is Community Outreach Senior Manager. And earlier this year, actually, I guess it was last fall, we hired a new Junior Ranger Program Manager, and that is Lee Michael Craigor. So I'm going to pass it over to him and his team.
Leo, should I just say slide? I'm good. Oh, yeah, cool. Sweet. All right. Hello, everybody. My name is Lee Michael. Thank you, Natasha, for that introduction. It's an absolute pleasure to be here with you all today, and to get to talk a little bit about a program that is very near and dear to my heart, the Junior Ranger Program. Today, we're just going to talk a little bit about our Summer 2025 highlights, where the program has been, where we're headed, and why. So without further ado, next slide, please. Cool. So I think the best place to start would be with an introduction of who I am. Obviously, I am the new Senior Program Manager. And so I thought it would be apt to start with an introduction. If you guide your eyes over to the left side picture of young Lee Michael, you probably have some thoughts come up. And I know what you're thinking. How does a very fashionable young man raised by two New York City dwellers end up with a career in land management? The short answer to that would be to look at the picture next to you. That's my hometown. That's Barhamsted, Connecticut, population 3,000, where there is more deer than people. The long answer is that my dad's vision of raising children in the woods was quite literal. The backdrop where I grew up didn't just influence me. It formed me. It shaped me. It made me into the person that I am today. The pace, the space, the quiet, they all seeped into how I saw the world and my place in it. By the time I stumbled upon the Junior Ranger Program, I was standing at a crossroads in life. I'd spent the last three years post-college leading expeditions across the country, deserts, mountains, coastlines. I'd slept under the stars more nights than I could count, logged 175 days a year in a tent and on a sailboat, and I loved almost every minute of it. Almost because there was something missing. Next slide, please. That something was community. It's hard to feel grounded when you're always on the move, even if the views are spectacular. And what I craved wasn't just the next adventure. It was a place and a people to belong to. So that kind of brings us to a full circle moment. A decade ago, I applied to be a crew lead and became a crew lead for the program that I am now in charge of. On my very first day, if you look at the pictures up there, we created a flag with a set of values on it. And we weren't just committing to those for the rest of the session. We didn't just write them because we had to. We wrote them because it was a chance for us to get to choose the rules in which we were going to live by that summer. They weren't just slogans. They became the DNA of our crew. And now, almost a decade later, I see them in the very foundation of the program. Values like these don't just fade with the seasons. They're passed down, built upon, and carried forward. Next slide, please. So the vision of the program, before talking about this, I would like to acknowledge that 2025 marks 21, just kidding, 60 years, sorry, Dan, of the Junior Ranger Program in the city of Boulder. The beauty of this program is that it doesn't just look backwards at tradition. It brings it forward. Every crew operates within the ethos that the land matters, public service matters, and that the people, especially young people, thrive when they're part of something meaningful. So jumping back into the vision, this year was all about connecting with the broader network of open space and mountain parks to have a deeper impact on the land that we love so much, as well as a deeper insight into what careers are available when we talk about outdoors and the outdoor world. So really cool opportunity for the youth. Our new partnerships looked like partnering with the water team, trailheads. We had the E&amp;L interns. And then we also got to spend some time with cultural stewardship, which was really cool. We continue to push for equity through marketing, volunteer events, internships, and hiring strategies. And then we also were able to dedicate some money towards mental health and nutrition. Next slide. Cool. So where do we align with the master plan priorities? Welcoming a diverse background of abilities and just a diverse background in general, I think that's something that the program does really well. We create space for those who need it. We create space for people who might feel like they don't have a place in the outdoors. We also connected youth to the outdoors. We did that through connecting them to each other, to themselves, to nature, and apart from their cell phones. Last, we inspired environmental literacy and more investment in open space in general. When you see the career paths that are in front of you within open space and mountain parks, a lot of times, our youth is very exciting. So that one, pretty effortless. Next slide. When we talk about hiring, we are talking about a very competitive program. Our program had 271 applications for 110 positions. We had 12 interviews conducted in Spanish. We had a highly qualified applicant pool. We had our fifth-year partnership with Nature Kids Boulder. We brought back assistant crew leads, all of which were former Junior Rangers. We hired a diverse group, and we developed a marketing strategy. The one thing that came up is that we noticed a divide in how youth are able to talk about their experience, specifically when you talk about the kids who might have gone to school in the Boulder area, the way that they talk about environmental literacy, climate change, stewardship, community. It's a little bit different than someone who grew up without that as part of their education. So I raise the question, how do you provide equitable opportunities for underrepresented youth in service learning in the outdoor careers field? Really, what we landed on is an emphasis on attitude over experience. It's much more important to our program that you show up with a great attitude towards work, towards community, towards teamwork in general, than it is that you have experience with land management or time outside. Next slide, please. Cool. And then everybody's favorite part, talking about budget. We start with an $833,000 starting budget. Seventy-seven percent of our budget is dedicated to our staff salaries. Twelve percent of that budget supports their benefits, which leads us 11% of our budget to support our total operations. How the 11% is distributed, this year, we had a big emphasis on providing lunches, snacks, and electrolytes. We wanted to aim to combat food scarcity and make sure that people who are showing up to work in a laborious environment are feeling like they're having their basic needs met, whether or not their families can support them. And so this also extended to, you know, we have youth workers, so youth that might have either forgotten to bring enough snacks or enough calories. We have an open door policy in our kitchen, and it really is for people who are in need. So no questions asked. If you do need calories, there's a kitchen always open to you at Junior Rangers that goes for crew leads and for crew members. We also use this budget to buy things like PPE and tools. We do crew leader trainings. We do marketing, distribution of information, job fairs, recruitment sites, bringing on additional staff to help us with youth interviews. When we talk about doing those 271 applications, that's also every one of those youth is being offered an opportunity to actually have an interview. So it's 270 interviews as well. And then lastly would be program software. We're looking towards the future with paid internships to bridge the education gap. So something that we worked on during the preseason was that basically addressing how can we equip youth to talk about their experience regardless of what it is and make it relevant to Junior Rangers, to being a supportive team member and an upstanding member of the community. That's currently pending with the hiring freeze. We're not sure if we're going to be able to offer that, but it is something that we would like to do. And then the other thing that we're looking forward towards in the future is additional marketing opportunities. The ultimate goal is to make Junior Rangers feel like a place for everybody. Cool. That is going to be the end of my portion of the budget. And next slide, I'll hand it off to Alex Radowski.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alex Radowski. I'm one of the Senior Program Coordinators for the Junior Rangers. It is my seventh year with the program. I actually started when I was 14 as a Junior Ranger, so very full circle, grateful to be here. Lee touched on all the great work that we provide for the community and the outreach we do for the youth in bringing them into the outdoors and stewardship. But I wanted to touch a little bit on the actual impact that we have across the system, because 110 youth throughout the whole summer can get a lot of work done. So like Lee was discussing, we have had an emphasis this year on partnering with other or other parts of open space rather than just trails, so that the youth can have an opportunity to see all the career potentials in open space or conservation field. So with the water team, that was a new partnership. We moved over 40 tons of woody debris from their ditch system. So they were removing woody debris that was in the way of the ditches or ditches that were inactive. So they cleared that out and throw that in the back of the trailer or a truck, and then the water crew would remove that. So that was a very big help for them. They were super grateful for that, and we love that partnership as well. So I'm sure we're going to continue that next year as well. One of our highlights for the summer, and I think you'll hear from the Junior Rangers about this one as well, but we ended up carrying 45 bucks and 60 rails, so fencing material, up to basically the top of the first second flat iron trail. And then we were installing and building that fence as well. Michelle can attest to that. You can see some pictures of them carrying the buck on the bottom left, and then them carrying the rails up that really steep section of the first second on the bottom right. So that took a lot of teamwork and communication and coordination. But we were really grateful for trails for providing that opportunity. And I know, though it was the hardest, and everyone came home with really sore shoulders, it was one of the highlights for a lot of the Junior Rangers who were involved. Moving right along, we had a dock installation at Sawhill Ponds. So I'm sure you're aware of the new trailhead improvements to the Sawhill Ponds area. So we basically showed up one morning with a crew of 10 youth, and there was a flatbed truck with pieces of a dock. And we literally put it together, installed it, floated it out into the water. And by the end of the day, they had a new dock set up. So all the Junior Rangers loved it. And regardless of the fact that they had waders or not, they all ended up getting soaked. So it was a very fun day. And then another one of our all-time highlights is always working with the forestry crew. So basically, the forestry crew will go through their stand, remove the trees they need to remove, and then the Junior Rangers will help them chip the remaining material. So they're just passing it to the forestry crew members. And again, trend here is that the hardest projects end up being the favorites. So and then cattail removal with wildlife crew. You can see the Junior Rangers in the pond there. That's always a fun one. I think another trend, not only hardworking ones, but cool days where you get to be in the water is always fun as well. And beyond our other one-day partnerships, we've also been working on that deferred maintenance for the trails department. So we were responsible for maintenance on the whole six and a half miles of the Mesa Trail from basically Blue Bell Shelter all the way to the South Mesa Trailhead. So we chipped away about that for the first session, clearing drains, removing hazards, clearing that corridor, and then closing down social trails. So yeah, thanks. Next slide. And then I think the best people to hear from it aren't the people in charge, but the people who are able to be here every day. So we have Ella. She's a first year, and I'll hand it off to her.
Hello, my name is Ella Hariden, and I was part of Crew Four for the second session of the Junior Ranger Program. This was my first year working as a JR. And just to give a little background about myself, I spent a lot of time in the outdoors through activities like backpacking, hiking, and playing ultimate frisbee. Having the opportunity to spend so much time in nature during this job was so important to me and is one of the things that makes the JR Program so special. Working in the outdoors comes with its unique challenges, which taught me a lot of skills, a lot about myself, and a lot about the environment around me. One of the moments from this season that I learned a lot from, and one of my favorite memories, is when my crew was working on installing log steps on Marshall Mesa. It was close to 100 degrees outside, and it was hard physical labor as we were hammering rebar into the ground to secure the logs. We faced many obstacles. One of them was hammering through rock, and another was trying to keep the log flush to the bridge. After digging a hole for the log and filling it in with crush for better drainage, we found that hammering the rebar in caused the log to move away from the bridge, creating a big gap. After hammering the rebar in, the big gap caused us to choose to restart, so we took it out and tried again. We had to complete three stairs, so we set three logs, and we found ourselves having to restart the process several times. Over time, this led to frustration, as it felt like our hard work of hammering the rebar was going to waste because we had to restart. But as we started to problem solve, we figured out that hammering the rebar in from a different angle would naturally cause it to move towards the bridge. We also used teamwork, as some people would hold the log in place while one person would hammer it in. We would say encouraging words to each other when we were struggling. And I remember feeling like our crew had really come together to work as a team. We got the hang of it, and we eventually finished to create steps that both looked great and that I was proud of because of the hard work and teamwork that we put in. I ended up learning so much from this moment. I had learned what hard physical work feels like, and sometimes the process to complete something can be really slow. I learned how to effectively use the sledgehammer by driving down with my knees and my body instead of my arms. I learned how to work as a team, communicate, and ask for help, and that the final project often requires everyone contributing something different towards a common goal. I learned how to take a step back to view the problem from the different lens to problem solve and find a solution. And I learned how to work in 100-degree weather and how to persevere even though I was tired. And this is just an example of skills and lessons that I've learned working as a Junior Ranger. I've had the opportunity to build character within myself, learn new skills, and build connections with the people and world around me. I've learned a new way to view and understand what hard work is, which has caused me to gain respect for the process of completing projects. Being a Junior Ranger taught me these things in a special and unique way that was really effective and ended up becoming important to me. Being a Junior Ranger is a unique and great experience to bring teenagers from all over together. The lessons I've learned and the connections I've made with myself, other people, and nature is something I'm going to carry with me throughout my life and is what makes the Junior Ranger Program so special. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brooklyn Winchester, and I am a first-year Junior Ranger, and I was on the Field Science Crew. Before this year, every time that I heard the term Junior Ranger, I pictured a bunch of little kids running around and matching uniforms with those stickers that the Rangers hand out to you. And although we might have joked that we all looked like a summer camp a few times, I could not have been more wrong about the program. On the first day, we were placed in the crews that we would be working with for the rest of the session. I'll tell you now, if you were to have seen how reserved we all were on that first day versus the people we walked out on the last day, you would not have believed that it was the same people. Going into that first day of trail work with 12 strangers, I had no idea what to expect. For the first three days, we closed an undesignated trail off of Shanahan Ridge. I think one of the hardest things I've ever had to do was carry those tools up those hills on the first couple of days. And I will tell you, I have never been more sore than that next morning when I woke up. Eventually, my muscles and stamina built up, and I learned to love trail work. One of the most satisfying feelings is watching how much progress we were able to make as a team. Our third and final day at that location was the hardest yet. We were working on a really steep hill without a trail, and after days of hard work, we finally headed up that hill for the final time. We were almost at the top when our crew leads had us sit underneath a tree. They asked us to take a minute to look around. I had hardly noticed how beautiful the view was. You could see the flatirons, N-Car, and practically the whole city. We were being paid to work at a place that people travel all around the world just to see. I thought back to a moment earlier in the session, or later in the session, when we were talking to some scientists. We discussed how the first step we needed to make for our planet was being able to work with nature instead of trying to overcome it. I thought back to that moment underneath the tree, and I remembered the way that the hawks hunted above us and how there seemed to be an impossible amount of dragonflies in the air. They were working alongside us. We just had to take the time to notice. Working as a Junior Ranger, I learned just as much, or if not more, about how to view the world around me as how to do trail work. The things I learned and the people I met could not have come from anything other than the Junior Ranger Program. After spending five weeks in nature with these 12 strangers, we started to feel more like a family. By the last day, we knew each other so well, we were easily able to tell each other about our favorite parts about them and what we really appreciated. We even had a full trip to Alaska planned by the time we went home. At first, I was scared that I was going to feel like I wasted the last five weeks of my summer break. But now, I already miss my crew and being out on the trail. I couldn't think of a more rewarding thing that I could have spent my time on. Thank you to the Junior Ranger Program for everything you have given me this summer. And thank you again, all of you, especially Alex and Lee Michael, for this opportunity to share it today. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Aster. I am a fourth-year Junior Ranger. I just last Friday graduated from the program with four years of service. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Yeah, four years of information is a lot, so I've compiled it into something of a hefty speech to share with you all today. Yeah. I don't live super nearby. I live in Brimfield. I go to Brimfield High School, which is about 15 miles from Waterland Lake Trailhead, our campus. But what I want to tell you is why I'm okay with waking up before 6:00 AM to take an hour by bus to get to work on time for four summers in a row, when all of my friends were sleeping in until noon. The following paragraph is one that I wrote when I was told to reflect on my experience as a Junior Ranger, before knowing that I would have to share it with my supervisors. So Junior Rangers gave me a purpose. It honestly gave me a strong connection to my future in the outdoors, a foothold in a career of conservation. I would do this job over and over again, paid or unpaid. It gave me a strong community, one stronger than the one I have at home. Through the program, I've grown more than I ever could have without it. I've grown in my leadership, carrying it with me in my other activities and social circles. The program saved my life, giving me something to look forward to in every tomorrow. It's a vital part of who I am, giving me my hard-working attitude, motivation, problem-solving, and recognition of when I do a good job in any facet of my life. It's the reason that I come back so refreshed for every school year, despite being thoroughly burnt out by the end of the last one. During the season, it gives me clarity in my thoughts and feelings, allowing me to feel comfortable in sitting quietly alone with my thoughts and expressing my emotions maturely. It's given me a greater appreciation for my natural surroundings and knowledge about them that I carry with me in my real life. Had I had more time to talk more about each of those things, I would have. But that's what I'm here to do right now. I had my feet in the water at Left Hand Creek Park, considering what had changed in my identity since I became a Junior Ranger and why I had stayed. For the last four years, I've struggled with the idea of what I wanted to do for the rest of my life. I found it dumb that I had to figure out all of my life plans at the ripe age of 17, when I didn't even have my driver's license. Yet, the first week of my fourth summer here, I heard myself tell a coworker that if I could do this job for the rest of my life, I would. And for the rest of the session, I acted like it. I was always the most engaged for every teaching moment. I asked every OSMP professional about their path to their position. And I took, sorry, always took time to make quality work to strengthen the skills I would need to follow career in conservation. My crew leaders over the years have always given me so much space and guidance to build these skills, like at the North Sky Trail, where I probably asked every crew leader eight times what it was supposed to look like when it was finished, and was always met with such patience and clear direction. But those technical skills aren't the whole foundation of this career. The soft skills that I've learned from this year alone are enough to carry me so much farther in all of my other activities. For instance, we play certain games that are designed to teach us certain traits. For example, asking for help in a game that involved being blindfolded in a maze with no exits, where all of our crew leaders and coordinators were there to help. It was stupid to me at the time that I wouldn't be able to get out on my own. But at the end of it, my view on asking for help and guidance had drastically changed, and I now feel more confident in doing so. Not to mention learning how to drink six liters of water before lunch. The community I built here is also one of the reasons I keep coming back. Spending a month in 98-degree weather, throwing tools at trails that have been messed up in the gnarliest of ways, with nine other high school students in tennis bra yellow shirts, really forged a strong connection between us. In just a month of working together, I felt safer with my crew leaders than I ever had with any teacher. And I felt as if they had seen a bigger side of me than anyone else in my life. In fact, my crew leader from my first summer with the program is still sitting in the room with us today, supporting my success in this field and letting me have a voice of influence for the program that has done so much for me. Shout out to Alex. And when I say that that program saved my life, I mean to describe the feeling of excitement I get every year when applications open, the speed at which I get out of bed at 5:30 to put on my yellow shirt, and the heavy feeling I get at the end of each session. The joy I feel seeing the dirt on my hands at the end of the day, evidence that I made a difference in my natural world. Throwing cattails out of the pond and watching the water clear up, and speaking to the wildlife professional, gaining clarity for how to reach my own goals. Listening in silence to the hawks, the hummingbirds, and the wind with a ranger, and knowing I'll probably get to work with him again in the future. Getting to share all of my nerdy plant and wildlife knowledge in a place with real biodiversity that I don't see in my own city. Being outside and making a difference in the communities surrounding Boulder gives me more pride and happiness than anything I do at home. When I tell my relatives that I built fences on the first and second flat iron, I cannot hide my smile when they say, yeah, that trail really needed fences. Yet, all I can do with the program ends when my summer does. Tomorrow, I have to return to school, and I'm going to miss the experiences that I had with the Junior Ranger Program. But that program has given me so many more ideas for how to get my own community outside and how to improve the biodiversity of Brimfield. I plan to join the open space initiative that was started in the last few years, petitioning to keep some of the historic open space in the industrial town square that will be built on top of it. Slowly, I've started building a community of people to help me reach these goals. And with the leadership and communication skills I've learned through this program, I hope to create a lasting positive influence on the ecology in my hometown, something I never would have considered without my summer job. And to many, that's all it is, just a summer job. But for me, Junior Rangers was the first step to the rest of my life. Thank you.
Yeah, come over here, join me. Next slide, please. So we have compiled, to end this meeting, seven life lessons from the Junior Rangers. Before we go into it, I just want to end it by saying, the Junior Ranger Program is such a powerful example of what is possible when we create space for young people to reconnect with nature, with each other, and most importantly, with themselves. What this program offers goes far beyond job training. It's about fostering a deeper sense of purpose, belonging, and agency in a world that often distracts us from what truly matters. Junior Rangers is a beautiful opportunity that supports this mission, guiding teens into roles where they not only care for the earth, but they begin to see their own potential to lead, serve, and grow into who they were always meant to be. Seven life lessons from a Junior Ranger.
Lesson number one, life is like a trail. If you don't maintain it, it washes out. Just like Junior Rangers build check steps and clear drainages to keep the trail strong, we need habits and care to keep our own lives on track and moving it in the right directions.
Lesson number two, you can't stop the rain, but you can enjoy the mud.
Lesson number three, don't argue with a pigmatic. It has two sharp ends and no sympathy for your toes. Learn to work with your tools, not against them.
Lesson number four, trail math. One large rock plus 10 teenagers equals team building.
And lastly, how to make mom happy. Less phone, more work. Attached is an email that I got, which I don't know if I can read right now, but it's okay. Basically, it was thanking me for the flexibility. Mother was expressing how they're not sure how we tricked their son into enjoying hard work, but they've given up playdates, bike races, and woken up early all summer excited to go to work. She goes on by saying, I'm not sure how you make this hard work fun, but we commend you for it. And then the bottom part was, he even expressed to me that he's not allowed to use his cellphone during lunch. Huge win for the parents. Thank you so much. Sweet. Next slide. Thank you and questions.
That was an amazing presentation. Thank you, guys. I have a feeling that my fellow board members want to make some remarks. So Michelle is looking anxious, so go ahead, Michelle.
This is my, sorry, this is my fifth and last year on the board. So I've gotten to hear this end-of-season recap now five times. And it is my favorite time of the year, in part because I get to listen to you all and meet you all, and the fact that my kids are back in school. But, okay, so I'm going to ask a question, but I'm going to ask the question of any of the three of you who want to answer it, but then I'm going to say a few more things. So you have some time. It's voluntary if you want to answer it. But if you could just describe one very small or big moment from the summer that you're most proud of, I'd love for you to share that. most proud of, I'd love for you to share that. Small or big, doesn't matter. But, you know, I really love this program because it just really teaches you so much. Like, we talk about the technical trails and also the, talk technical skills and also the soft skills. Like, you cannot learn those soft skills, I mean, some people never do, how to resolve conflict and be an adequate team member, and you're all learning this before you head off to college. So it's super impressive. The city enables this to get done, get this work done. I wish we had more money in the budget to give you all and you could hire more people. Also wish that we could get you more sun protection rather than just the yellow t-shirt, but I will try to help there. And I know that you all get like a gear stipend to pay for boots and stuff, but I've seen you all out there. Fortunately, I was invited to go and on August 1st, and volunteer for a few hours, and they allowed me to bring my thirteen-year-old kids, and we helped on the one-two trail. So, now, if you think that they're, these kids are, you know, sloughing off, they are having fun, and they should have fun, because they're learning these riddles that I never figured out, but when they do have downtime. But they're talking and they're doing these riddles. It was just so inspiring to hear it, but also, like, we had to go hike up that trail, a very steep and technical trail, that it's hard for people just to hike up. They were holding logs and these giant, heavy bucks and all these tools, and they knew how to use the tools. And now I know we're at the end of the season. My kids, who are thirteen, were learning how to use these tools and to bang the rebar into the dirt, and it takes a while. But I was just so impressed with all of the people there. I've got to hear about the program from being back here, but there's nothing like actually being able to participate. And Alex made that happen for me, too, to take us out there. We were only there for a short period of time, but we built that one piece of fencing right below that technical slab, rock slab, and every time that we walk by that, we'll be like, "We built that." And then I got to talk to the kids. I'm like, "Why are you doing this?" And they're like, you know, they had a variety of answers, and they had a variety of good answers, but, you know, preventing people from going off-trail prevents further erosion on a trail that's already very steep and difficult and is eroding through people just taking shortcuts through that area. So I was just really impressed. I know that you do a really great job in selecting people. You interview every single person. Bless you for doing that, because that's two hundred and something people, or interviews that you're conducting. And, you know, there's one person I know who, I know you're trying to get people from, like, lots of different experiences in, or lack of experiences in the outdoors, so that, and Alex was telling me about that in the car, of how you've really tried to broaden, you know, people's diversity, and that relates to their experience in the outdoors as well. And we had a neighbor girl who applied and got a job, and she had moved here from Singapore, and she'd never spent much time outdoors, and she was definitely afraid of bugs. And I was like, "Oh, boy, I hope this goes well." But, you know, I asked her about it when she finished the program, and she's like, "Oh, I feel so much more confident being outdoors, and I want to be outdoors more," and knowing that I could do it and being shown, and being shown that I could do it, as she needed it proven to herself, I think. But this is just such a great program. I love you all coming here. It's my favorite time of year, and I'm so proud of you all for all the work that you've done on those trails and work on yourself. Thank you. Yeah, if you're ready to answer, anybody?
Yeah, so actually, the moment that I'd be most proud of actually was on that first and second flatiron trail. It was, it was like the second day that we were doing it, and we had been carrying up logs all day, and it was like one o'clock, two hours before we had to leave. And my crew leader kind of stopped us and was like, "All right, guys, do you guys want to carry up one more round of logs, or do you want to stop for the rest of the day?" And we closed our eyes, and we were called to a vote, and we voted to keep going so that we wouldn't have more work to do the next day. And so I was just super proud of that and the work ethic that we had in that moment. Yeah.
I love that. Thank you, Aster.
For me, like, I was thinking through all the moments that I could say of building on trails and stuff, but being a part of the science research crew, we had spent so much time collecting data, and we went and we spent the whole last week analyzing the data and looking through and figuring out what are we really looking at? And it ended up being that, at the end of it, none of the data that we had collected was really usable. And so, we had spent all of this time, like, putting together this, all this research, and we were still able to get a lot of really helpful information out of it, but just knowing that that end goal of like what we were really trying to prove wasn't really provable. And it was just, the thing that I'm most proud of was just my team's, like, attitude about it, because we were like, "Okay, well, everything that we've been working on for this entire session is kind of gone." But we were able to turn around and turn the paper into, "This is what you should do next time." And our crew was able to turn it from something that we were doing into something that can really help the entire community with what we did wrong and with the research that we made and how it can help others, so.
Nice learning from mistakes.
One of the moments that I'm really proud of is, Alex mentioned it earlier, but our crew had the opportunity to work on a dock, and we arrived there with, and we were working with trailheads, and the dock was in boxes, and it was kind of crazy because we, in like maybe around like three or four hours, we put all the pieces of the dock together, and it looked great, and I'm really proud of it because I never thought that we would able to, we would be able to build a dock in just three or four hours, but it's going to be a dock, and it has, and there's access for people who use wheelchairs, so that was really cool. And it's, and we were able to contribute to a really big project, so I was really proud of that.
Thank you, Ella.
Hey, thanks, everybody, for coming in. I think I'm two years in, and I haven't volunteered with y'all yet, so that's on me, and I'll fix that. Just a few really quick observations. Lee, great job. Obviously, you feel comfortable in the role. I'm just going to say it looks like it from here. And so, that's great. And I really appreciate that you threw the budget in your presentation and talked about the numbers and gave us a breakdown, and what that tells me is, as a manager, is, you know, you've got control of the numbers, but this is also a lot about people and inspiration in the work, and so I just want to say I appreciate the balance in the presentation. And having a little bit of a background in outdoor education, it's just gratifying to see that when you put young people who don't know each other in an unfamiliar setting, and ultimately, maybe this is more about being needed than anything, you know, meaningful work, doing hard things together, feeling that you're needed, feeling that there's more to life than staring at your phone or whatever else. And I just know that my kids, with AI coming, there's even more of a question about what are people for? There's less of things for us to do in the world, and so I just, I just think making, you know, providing an environment in which these kind of universal truths can come out, and we can celebrate them and then discover what it is to be human in some ways, it's beautiful. And also, I'm going to benefit from the work that y'all do on the, and so, you know, we can put all the emotional inspiration aside, and there's real work that happened on the ground, too. So, anyway, this is just great. I really appreciate the work that y'all did, the program, and the presentation, so thank you very much.
I just want to say that I'm with Michelle. This is the best time of the year, and we talk sometimes about, you know, a lesson or a moment where we realize why we're here, you know, why am I serving on this board? And I see it in your faces. It's fantastic. You know, the managers and the program leads who are running this program are obviously creating an amazing place for young people to do really meaningful things and grow in really meaningful ways, and so I commend you. And the, you three kids are just, I mean, each one of your prepared remarks, it's like a valedictory, and then each one of your answers to Michelle's question was just like an affirmation of everything that you're bringing to us and everything you've brought to yourself. So I'm just really moved by this. I appreciate you a lot. So, thanks for coming, and keep doing it.
Thank you, Alex, Lee, Michael. Kids, that was awesome. Thank you so much. And now we get to do even something more inspirational, and that's to approve last month's minutes of our board meeting, so. With that, Harmon, can you top it?
All right. I don't think we're going to top what we just saw, but the minutes are pretty fantastic. So, we'll follow our usual protocol. As we look at the minutes, does anybody have any changes to the first page? Page two.
I'm sorry, I didn't mark it up because I read this on my iPad, and didn't mark it my hard copy, but there's, I think it's page two, maybe it goes into three. Oh, actually, it's the top of three.
Okay. Anything on page two? Nope. Page three?
Page three, in the unbolded language, just place my name. Add one more L.
Two Ls.
Add one more L. That's okay. And then I just wanted to add that Michelle said she dissented because the statement was too focused on the out-years, and then add that are strictly estimates.
Can you live with that, Brady? Yeah, I'm good with that, too. Okay, any other changes on page three? Page four? Motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All right. Take a hand vote. All right. Passes three, nothing, two absences. Okay. Let's see, what's the next item on the agenda? Okay, we're going to go to public comment for items that are not identified for public hearing, and we don't have any public hearing items tonight, so anything that is related to the charter obligations of the Open Space Board that you want to bring to us, you're welcome to come and speak to it. And we'll do public participation protocols first.
Thank you. The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and OSPT, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement processes, please visit the link below. The city will enforce the rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code, including participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by, and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. No attendee shall disrupt, disturb, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of any city meeting in a manner that obstructs the business of the meeting. This also includes failing to obey any lawful order of the presiding officer to leave the meeting room or refrain from addressing the board. Only one person at a time at the podium unless an accommodation like an interpreter is required. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No standing in or otherwise blocking the aisles in violation of the fire code or in a way that obstructs the vision or audio of other audience members. No signs or flags shall be permitted in council chambers, except for one sign held by a person measuring no more than eleven by seventeen inches, which is held no higher than the person's face. No participant shall make threats or use any other forms of intimidation against any person. We ask that you not affix items to the podium or dais or walls or other surfaces of the chamber. Signs, flags, or other items used to communicate must be held by one person when displayed. Obscenity, other epithets based on race, gender, or religion, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the meeting will not be tolerated. In-person participants are asked to refrain from expressing support or disagreement verbally or with sounds, such as applause or snapping, with the exception of declarations. Traditionally, support is shown through American Sign Language applause or jazz hands. If you are joining in person and would like to speak during public comment or items identified for public hearing, please sign up at the dais here, and we'll call you up to speak at the podium. If you're joining online, you can raise your hand to speak during public comment or items identified for public hearing. You can do that using the raise hand icon or by clicking the participants icon, then the three dots on the bottom right, and select raise hand. So we have nobody signed up in advance to speak tonight. We do have two people who have signed up in the room. If there's anybody else in the room who would like to speak, please come sign up here. If you're online, you could raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, press star nine. So, up first, we have Shannon Forsman, followed by Giles Trouton.
Hey, everybody. I'm Shannon Forsman. Happy to be here tonight. Just, I wanted to quickly make a comment about the Flagstaff issue on the agenda later on. Really quickly, though, to give you a background, I am born and raised in Boulder. I've lived here my whole life, except for briefly going to university, so I've been around for a long time. I am an avid climber, and I grew up right at the base of Flagstaff Mountain. I live in North Boulder now, but I have climbed at Flagstaff my whole life, and it's probably the first place I started climbing as a young kid, so it's really important to me. And I guess we all can kind of think of Flagstaff as this iconic Boulder area, and it is really cool because it supports all sorts of recreation, you know, biking, climbing, hiking, whatever, lots of other things. From my perspective, I'm going to talk about it in terms of climbing. I think what is so cool about Flagstaff is not just the fact that it's absolutely gorgeous and amazing views and everything, it's the accessibility of it to the public. And accessibility not only means its proximity to downtown Boulder, which it's so close, which is great, it also means, like, pull-out usage in particular. And so, coming from a climber perspective, I have always used the dirt pullouts and have actually rarely ever parked in the paved spots. And so, I just wanted to make a comment, I, as a climber, because I have gone there, you know, and climbed with moms with their new babies, professional climbers, families, you know, racing there after work before it gets dark to utilize a space that we all kind of really care about. And I know that the pilot program isn't going to affect any of the climbing areas, and, you know, and ultimately, I really support if it can reduce crime. That's great. I just, the only comment I would like to make is that, you know, when that pilot program wraps up, the OSMP continues, as they've done in the past and currently, to have open communication with the climbing community so that if any decisions are made, you know, about pullouts higher up, you know, realizing that it does have a big impact on the climbing community, that you'll keep us in the loop so that we continue to work together and find solutions to protect, you know, both the safety and access of a place that we all really love. So, thank you very much. That's it. And fun fact, I did Junior Rangers as a kid, so that was actually very cool.
Up next is Giles Trouton, and if there's anybody online who would like to speak, please raise your hand.
That's not mine. I just wanted to know that that's sitting here. So, just going to move that. Giles Trouton from Boulder. Following those Junior Rangers and that management team is a tough act. I remember, this is the second time I've had to do that, which reminds me that this must mean it's been a year that I've been coming and preaching to you guys, which is probably not a good thing for either one of us, but, anyway. Preparing open comments gives me an opportunity for self-reflection. Unfortunately, it's got probably some negative consequences for trustees and staff, but my brain went to a movie from the early eighties, which maybe Dan and I are the only ones who might remember this, but had a great cast, Glenn Close, William Hurt, Kevin Kline, Goldblum. Movie was called The Big Chill. There's a line in that that talks about rationalizations. I don't know if you remember this, but it says, "Don't knock rationalizations. I don't know anyone who could get through the day without two or three juicy rationalizations. They're more important than sex. When's the last time you went a week without a rationalization?" It was Jeff Goldblum who delivered that, right? So, I mention this because I think it's good for all of us to think about whether or not the things we're doing are because we're doing the right things, or we're just convincing ourselves, or trying to convince somebody else that we're doing them because we think they're the right things. So we need to reflect back on that. Anyway, I'm going to talk about a couple of things tonight that I've mentioned before, and I respectfully ask staff or the management team to potentially comment, respond to any of these things if they can. That would be great. The Flagstaff corridor, things are better, but there's still room for improvement. There was a second portable sign right in the flat panorama point turnaround. That's been removed. Hopefully, it can get back there at some point. I'd like to rerate- I'd like to re-raise the concept of red flag day protocols, and whether or not it might be possible to close the trails during red flag days, or at least close the trails maybe during the same hours that parking is currently prohibited, maybe nine PM to five AM. There's some nasty things that happen in that area during the dark. Wildfire targets, I think it was last month I asked for the Colorado State Forest Service and IBHS targets to be included in the, have a conversation with the wildfire corps team and build those into the CWPP. I'd like an update on that, please. Human-caused ignition, I think it was Brian Aniker at the last meeting or the meeting before, that gave some examples, gave some data on wildfires occurring in Boulder. But he didn't put really, didn't put that in much context. I think we need to look at a five or 10-year trend if we're gonna really focus on reducing human-caused ignitions. And we need to put charac, we need to put attributes associated with each of those events, so that we know how to focus our efforts, and we know whether or not we're actually making a meaningful change in reducing the number of events. Last thing I'd raise is, again, is fuel management standards. I'd like to understand the standards that OSMP has for when they intervene in a particular parcel for grasslands. Is it the height of the grass and the moisture content for a forest? Is it a canopy cover? Colorado State Forest Service told me that they recommend no more than ten to thirty ponderosa pines per acre, and even after mitigation, OSMP might have as many as a hundred. Thank you.
There's nobody else signed up on, uh, in person or online.
Okay, thanks, then, uh, let's close public comment. The next item on the agenda. Which is, um, trustee questions or discussion on the public comment under matters from the board. Do we have any, uh, reactions from the board? Yep, and this could be to public comment, or it could just be a matter from the board. It's on your mind.
I just wanted to, um, comment on our public speaker, sorry, I lost her name, that we are gonna talk about Flagstaff later, and I share a lot of, um, your sentiments, and I think I'll save my remarks for that particular section. I just wanted to let you know.
Brady, do you have any, uh, any other matters you want to bring to the board's attention?
I just asked Giles to submit your comments by email. I don't need the Jeff Goldblum quote necessarily, but you had a few specific questions, and, uh, I didn't follow all of them, so just, that's just helpful for me. And yeah, I think the, the Flagstaff comments were spot on, um, from my perspective, too, so.
Yeah, Brady, if I can, Giles, that would be important for staff to respond. I, I tried to jot it down as much as I could, but yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay. I don't have any, so, we're gonna jump to, uh, the next matter from the board, next and last, which is for us to appoint the Fall Retreat Subcommittee. We have a, it's not really the Fall Retreat, it's our annual retreat, right? Or do we have two retreats a year now? Okay, so it's the annual retreat, it happens to be in fall, and, um, we like the retreat, and, um, every year we have a committee, so, uh, we'll take volunteers to be on the retreat committee.
Michelle, will you be there?
No, she.
I'll be at the retreat.
She doesn't wanna be on the retreat.
I'll be at the retreat, but I have served on the committee two years already.
Yeah, so you're out.
Yeah.
I would like to give my fellow trustees an opportunity.
Michelle served honorably two different times. Are you gonna nominate yourself, Brady, or should I nominate you?
Well, I'm just, uh, just, you know, I'm trying to build the suspense here, there's three of us, Michelle's not gonna do it, so.
The obvious thing to do is to make Sarah and John do it since they're not here. You know, they volunteered.
And the honorable thing to do.
I nominate Sarah and John.
So for real, though, I'll nominate you, Brady.
Well, I'm gonna nominate you then, Harmon.
Okay, does anybody wanna, wanna nominate anybody else? Okay, so the retreat committee will be Brady and me this year, like it was last year, actually, and we'll make the newbies do it next year.
In all seriousness, Michelle, are you comfortable with the same, the, us two doing it again?
Yeah, that's fine, I'm, I'm really appreciative that you're willing to do it. I mean, I, I would be willing to do it if you couldn't manage.
No, it's fine.
I'll be your sub if you, if you decide.
No, it's, it's, it's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, let it, let it be shown that Brady and Harmon are gonna be the retreat Subcommittee again, and we will move on to matters from the department, Dan.
Yeah, just to one comment, uh, for the two of you to, uh, in the future, we're allotting some various amount of time in each of the next three meetings for Subcommittee, um, discussion, how you wanna use that time, so just to kind of keep that in mind, that you're, there's a specific item on the agenda for the Subcommittee, uh, for the next three months.
Okay, and, you know, I'll just follow up on that by saying, um, you know, last year was my first year on the Retreat Subcommittee, and I found the work that we did together, and when we even came to your office, Brady and I, to be really useful. And I thought, uh, we worked well together as a team, uh, as well with, uh, with staff. And, um, so we're ready to do that again. And also, you know, as, as everybody on the board, I hope, knows, you know, it's not exactly like a really top-down kind of board, so, um, Brady and I are gonna be open to suggestions for retreat topics. And you'll have an opportunity to make those suggestions, both offline and formally, and in these check-ins that, that Dan just mentioned over the next couple of months.
We can handle this offline, but what, what's the next step? Is it, is it that kickoff meeting with you, Dan?
I think the next step is, uh, I will set up a meeting for the three of us, but usually, we talk about how do we wanna generate ideas for topics is the first step.
Yeah, okay, so that's the next step, is the three of us.
And, uh, staff, staff will also generate some topics. You all will generate topics, and we'll come together with that list, and hopefully, we could also generate some sort of prioritization of all the topics. That would be the second step, is, we might have a list of twelve, ten, and then how to go back and say, hey, let's give some weight, priority weight to this, to help decision-making.
Yeah, sounds good.
I just wanted to say that when I served on the Subcommittee, we always went out to lunch. So you guys are suckers, going to his office.
Well, I was hoping for a different mix this year, I didn't get lunch.
Go to lunch.
All right, we've got, uh, three matters from the board tonight. Again, uh, like the last few meetings, a really good variety, rich variety, and we are gonna start to provide you, uh, with an update on our Fort Chambers Poor Farm Site Plan implementation. And the implementation specifically that we're gonna be talking tonight is the development of the Healing Trail. That is one of the elements of the site plan, concept plan, that was approved, uh, and is underway. We have, uh, Katie Knapp, who is gonna be joining us remotely. Oh, good, she's here, so I was hoping technology would come in. She's been our project manager, uh, through the site plan, uh, development, and now, uh, as well as leading us into, uh, the build-out of what the interpretive trail could look like. And we are just wrapped up engagement window number two, heading into number three, and Katie will give us a recap of what we've heard, and then what's ahead. So with that, Katie, take it away.
All right, great, um, first is sound check, are you able to hear me okay?
You sound fine.
Okay, great, um, thanks. Sorry for not being able to be there in person tonight, but I'm happy to be here to, um, provide an update on the Fort Chambers Poor Farm, and the design of the interpretive experience along the Healing Trail. So I'll be doing a quick review of the process, talk about the latest community input, and then, um, also ask for your input on the interpretive experience. So. See, okay, great, so we've been, um, following, um, a five-step process for this design, um, to incorporate community input while also continuing our collaboration with the Cheyenne and Arapaho tribes. So the yellow star shows where we are, finishing up, um, step two, identifying themes and priorities, and starting step three, identifying a vision. So, um, our first step was listening and learning. So the goal was to hear all of the potential experiences and stories people desire for interpretation along the trail. We collected community input online and at an in-person event in March, um, and that was hosted by Ernest House Jr. So we've received a lot of input, um, different stories and ideas were summarized and grouped into four main categories. We shared these out with the public, with the board, and we also met with the tribes to discuss their thoughts on the input. Um, our understanding was that there was no important stories that were missing, and that all the ideas were important for further consideration. So then moved into step two, identifying themes and priorities. So we took all of the ideas from step one, um, and using the, um, some of the verbiage, and, you know, trying to stay true to the stories that we collected from the, from the community, I just wanted to highlight that. And then we asked which ones were most important for representation along the Healing Trail. So the goal was to understand the most important ideas to share and the reasons why. We discussed the ideas with the tribal representatives, um, we also collected community input through an online questionnaire and at an in-person workshop. So both the questionnaire and the workshop started with an introduction to explain the vision for the Healing Trail, as an interpretive trail with some key features to foster learning, reflection, and healing. There will be spots for some different elements, such as signage and artwork to highlight historical aspects and share information, as well as spots to sit, rest, and reflect. But we also understand that this isn't a museum, so there aren't, you know, walls of display area. And we wanna be thoughtful about what is included, understanding what is most important for physical representation, and then what can be shared through programming. Through the questionnaire and the in-person event, we asked what ideas are most important to include along the Healing Trail. We really wanted to understand the most important ideas to represent. So the questionnaire and the event were announced broadly. We had seventy-two online responses, and twenty-three people sharing input at the in-person event. So I'll first review the online responses from the questionnaire, then I'll go through the workshop input and do a, um, a comparison and summary of the two different forms of input. So in the online questionnaire, uh, we asked about the importance of each topic separately. So people could choose from extremely important, which is the, uh, the dark purple, um, that you see is the bigger wedge on the circles here. Somewhat important, which is the, the rust color here. Slightly important, which is a light blue, and not at all important, it's yellow. I don't know, which is green, or no opinion, which is blue. So these next slides show the results, and these have been ordered from the most important ideas to the least, based on the responses. So you'll see the graphs shift a little bit as we go through the list. So the highest-scoring topic was the aftermath of the Sand Creek massacre for the Arapaho and Cheyenne tribes. Um, and the second most important topic was contemporary, present-day tribal culture. There we go. Coming in third and fourth in the rankings was victims of the Sand Creek massacre and their personal stories, and indigenous native connection to the land and ecology. Then there was historical bias and continuing false narratives as depicted on the stone marker, followed by traditional ecological knowledge and indigenous plantings. Ranked seven was colonialization and its ecological impacts, and then Belmont Buttes history as a culturally important site. Next was the firsthand accounts of the Sand Creek massacre from Silas Sewell, Morris Coffin, Joseph Kramer, and others. And number ten was how non-native people can support tribal communities. And then here at about the halfway point, um, number eleven, indigenous agriculture and native wildlife replaced with European crops. And twelve was early settler perspectives and relationship with tribes. That was followed by Poor Farm removes unwanted people from society, and prominent local authority figures' participation in Company D. Then there was Colorado Governor John Evans glorified in the aftermath of the Sand Creek massacre, and the history of water rights in Boulder County. And next was the history of Western expansion, manifest destiny, followed by the city of Boulder's land acknowledgement. Then there was where members of Company D have been commemorated, such as streets and buildings, um, followed by the demographics of the early settlers. And then, we're getting to the bottom of the list here, there was the prosperity of settlers through agriculture and mining, followed by the lineage of the properties Queen Anne House residence. Then there was the interpretations of Chief Nywatt's alleged curse on Boulder Valley, and the bottom of the list was identifying the members of Company D. So one thing I would like to point out here is we went from, you know, mostly purple graphs on here, even though this is at the bottom of the list, we're still showing, um, over fifty percent of respondents showing that these topics were either extremely important or somewhat important for representation. So after, um, people taking the questionnaire considered each of the topics separately, we then asked them to choose their top three topics from the full list of items. And to help reduce bias, the list was randomized for each participant. So we wanted another way to highlight the most important topics and give us a way to cross-check the results from the first set of questions. So the results showed a nice distribution. There were three topics that stood out as the most important, with, and they had over twenty selections each. So the top three topics were the aftermath of the Sand Creek massacre for the Arapaho and Cheyenne tribes, the victims of the Sand Creek massacre and their personal stories, and indigenous native connection to the land and ecology. The next group was chosen between ten and twenty times, so this had the firsthand accounts of the Sand Creek massacre, contemporary tribal culture, historical bias, traditional ecological knowledge, Belmont Buttes history, and how non-native people can support tribal communities. There then was a grouping, um, of up to ten, um, selections each, and this included, um, indigenous agriculture and native wildlife replaced with European crops, um, colonialization and its impacts, uh, Poor Farm removing unwanted people from society, the history of Western expansion, identifying the members of Company D, the history of water rights, prominent local authority figures' participation in Company D, and the lineage of the properties Queen Anne House. And then the remaining ideas were either selected, um, just zero or one time each. So with one selection each was the city of Boulder's land acknowledgement, Colorado Governor John Evans glorified after the Sand Creek massacre, and the demographics of early settlers, and then with no selections was the interpretations of Chief Nywatt's alleged curse on Boulder Valley, where members of Company D had been commemorated, and the prosperity of settlers through agriculture and mining. So, in addition to the questionnaire, we also gathered input at a community workshop. We provided an overview of the project and asked people to share their input on which topics were most important using a dot exercise. So we had, um, different boards and, uh, in the walls, and, um, categories for each of the different topics, and participants received six dots, and they could place them wherever they wanted, um, choosing their most important topics. Um, and we did allow double votes, if somebody felt strongly about something, they could provide more than one, um, dot on a topic. So people are also encouraged to add post-it notes and share thoughts about why the topics were important, or other notes if they desired. So from the dot voting exercise, there were several topics that received, um, nine and ten votes each. Um, the most important topics with the ten votes each were the aftermath of the Sand Creek massacre for the Arapaho and Cheyenne tribes, indigenous native connection to the land and ecology, and the history of Western expansion, um, manifest destiny. Um, and then with nine votes, there was Belmont Buttes history as a culturally important site, historical bias and continuing false narratives, and early settler perspectives. Continuing down the list, um, with seven dots and six dots each were, were members of Company D had been commemorated, the victims of the Sand Creek massacre and their personal stories, the firsthand accounts of the Sand Creek massacre, the Poor Farm removing unwanted people from society, how non-native people can support tribal communities, the demographics of the settlers, indigenous agriculture and native wildlife replaced with European crops, colonialization, and the traditional ecological knowledge. And then with five or less dots was contemporary, present-day tribal culture, prominent local authority figures' participation in Company D. prominent local authority figures participation in Company D, the history of water rights, and interpretation of Chief Nywatt's curse, the Colorado Governor John Evans glorified, the lineage of the property's Queen Anne House residence, the prosperity of settlers through agriculture and mining, and identifying the members of Company D. There was only one topic that received zero dots, and that was the City of Boulder's Land Acknowledgement. So at the in-person workshop, we also collected additional thoughts that were shared on post-it notes. So these mainly included additional details about the different topics or suggestions, like restoring the house. And we received a question about who the Healing Trail was for. So let's look at how the different input compares. So for this graphic, we added the numbers from the questionnaire where people could choose their top three to the dot selections, and then we sorted from the most to the least. And so this graphic shows kind of a different distribution of results from the two different types of input. You can see in the purple is the online on the left, the online questionnaire, where the results are a little bit more dispersed. There's a wider distribution. While the in-person input was a little bit more even, showing more kind of equality and importance for a lot of the topics. So thinking about why there might be some of these differences. One reason is that in the online questionnaire, people were able to only choose three versus six in the in-person. So more participants could choose multiple topics in the online. And then there could also be an influence of seeing other people's votes or their dots on the in-person workshop. So if a topic was important to somebody and was maybe being left behind, they might add an extra dot to it to catch it up or something like that. So there might have been a little bit of influence just from that ability to kind of see how people were placing their dots. We also compared the difference sources of input, looking at where there was some overlap and some of the differences. So this graphic shows the ten highest-ranking ideas from the online questionnaire and from the in-person workshop. So six of these ideas were in the top ten on both lists here in the center. And so that's the Sand Creek massacre impacts for the tribes, the connection to the land, the Sand Creek massacre victim stories, historical bias and stone marker, Belmont Buttes cultural importance, and the Sand Creek massacre firsthand accounts. Where we had some differences, the questionnaire had in its top ten the contemporary tribal culture, traditional ecological knowledge, supporting tribal communities, and the impacts of colonialization. Whereas in the workshop, there was, in the top ten, there was the westward expansion, manifest destiny, settler perspectives, the Company D commemorations, and the poor farm history. So we did see a little bit more emphasis on some of the tribal culture and plantings in the questionnaire versus a little bit more emphasis on some of the settler stories in the workshop input. So another way of looking at the the top ten list from the two different input opportunities, this shows the same items ranked from kind of top to bottom of importance by adding the scores together. And so this highlights where there's a little bit of, you know, some of that differences between the different examples, you know, from online versus the event. But I did also want to point out, there's no magic number of ideas to represent. For example, you know, a sign or a sculpture or something could actually represent multiple different stories surrounding, you know, the Sand Creek massacre or something like that. And all of the topics that that we heard about can be interpreted at the site. Also, several of these topics also already have some physical representation, such as Belmont Buttes and the historic Poor Farm House. These features are on the land. They're visible from the site, and they can be highlighted with views and in different ways. So there's different options, and all of this input will be helpful when we, as we move into the design further. So gathering the input on the prioritization of the different themes and ideas, this was step two in the five-step design process. This input will be used for step three, where we will create a vision for the interpretive experience and identify how the stories will unfold along the Healing Trail. We'll then create a draft design and a final design. So interpretive design is a specialty, and we are very happy to have brought on a consultant to help us with this work. Studio Tectonic is an internationally renowned firm that's based in Boulder. Seth Frankel is the firm's principal and has been crafting educationally-focused public places for more than thirty years. So we're excited to have his team join us for this design effort. He's helping us design the next public workshop, which is scheduled for September twenty-second. And we've worked together with Seth already to start formulating some questions for the workshop, wanting to make sure that we're thoughtful in what we ask, so that the input can really be the most useful. So in an initial staff workshop with Seth and his staff, we started thinking about this next phase of engagement, how to focus the community input. And these are the types of questions we anticipate asking. We also will be asking you these same questions shortly. So these include, because we want to get your input on, for engagement window three also, as we are kicking that off. So the questions include, what would visitors like to think, feel, think, learn, feel, and do at the site? What visitor experiences are desired when entering the site, moving along the trail, through the site, and exiting? Understanding the limitations for onsite interpretive elements, what information is best shared through physical representation versus interpretive programming? And how do people prefer to learn or experience the site? For example, art, signage, tactile displays, audio? And what words come to mind when thinking about the interpretive trail experience? And this question and the answers could be used for consideration of different trailhead and trail names as we continue with the design. So as I mentioned, tonight's meeting, we're providing the summary of the input from engagement window two, and we're also starting engagement window three. So this shows some check-in points with the board. So we have future updates occurring at the end of this engagement window three in November, when we'll be sharing the community input we've received. And also, early next year, we should have a draft design to show the board and the community in February of 2026. So our next steps include sharing out the input we received. We're updating the project website, and then starting engagement window three, identifying a vision. So we'll be announcing new engagement opportunities, both in-person and online. We are preparing for the in-person design workshop on September twenty-second. And we're coordinating with Arapaho and Cheyenne tribal representatives to join us in-person for that workshop. So we'll have the community and tribal representatives together, which will be really great. Along with Studio Tectonic, the interpretive consultant, and Ernest House Jr. with Keystone Policy Center, who's been helping facilitate the public workshops. So after the workshop and online engagement, we will provide a board update later this year. Another thing I wanted to highlight is that Christian Driver, Open Space Mountain Park's Cultural Stewardship Program Manager, he's providing a cultural resource presentation to share what we know about the fort and its location. He's done a lot of research and wants to share that out, and this is being scheduled for August twenty-fifth. So with that, that concludes the information I'm presenting. Happy to answer questions about about any of this, but we also would like to get your thoughts about the Healing Trail experience. And we have this list of questions that I mentioned before for you to consider. So with that, I guess I can turn it back over to the board for questions.
Thanks, Katie. Any questions for Katie?
Before the board jumps in, just a point of clarification with Katie. So for that September twenty-second workshop, that is a workshop that board members are also very much invited to attend.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So do we-
Yeah, that is, we haven't really announced it out yet, but we will be soon. It'll be widely announced, and yeah, we're hoping to get great participation. We'd love to see some board members there as well, if you are able to.
All right, we're looking forward to seeing that email come out. Thank you. Do we have any questions, or do we want to address the discussion questions? Michelle?
Yeah, Katie, I just wanted to ask about the makeup of the folks who who answered the online survey versus the folks who came in person. Because you mentioned that the, and I read in the materials, that the in-person had a bit more focus on settlers versus the online folks.
Yeah, we don't-
I'm assuming that if people are, they live far away, that they are going to utilize the online survey instead of the in-person.
Yeah, I think we definitely had a broader reach through the online. We had more participation, more participants. We did see, we don't know, you know, exactly, it was anonymous. We don't know exactly who participated. Whereas in the in-person event, we do know who was there, you know. And we did see quite a few people from the Belmont community, some people with more settler interests. And so it does, it does make sense that that would be a well-represented in the input that we got from the in-person event.
Is it true that the people who came in person could have also filled out the online survey?
Yes, people were able to do both if they wanted to. And we did encourage people to do both, but I don't know that everybody did. You know, it does seem like, I know that at least some people that joined in-person did not fill out the questionnaire.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Thanks for the presentation. Maybe along the same kind of theme. Are you taking these, you've sliced and diced the data a lot of different ways. Are you taking these rankings of themes as being deterministic? Or is it suggestive? Like, how are you going to put this in to your process? And how are you going to balance this public input with the input from, say, the tribes that we've been working with?
Yeah, it's a great question. We do have interpretive consultant on board to help us with, you know, navigate through this. But we're also going to look at, you know, trying to make sure that we have some of the most important items represented, but hope to do it in a way where we can have multiple ideas shared with some similar features. For example, if there's like an interpretive sign, you know, some things might be a little bit more prominent on them than others, but they can include multiple different topics. And we'll also be working on programs for our interpretive staff to be able to lead, to really provide more information. This is, this site is, and the Healing Trail is really, like I mentioned, it's not a museum. It's not the type, it's not the type of place where you're going to go and learn everything about something. But you'll learn that it was an important site. There's important things that happened here. And you hopefully will get enough of a knowledge of that to really want to do a little bit more research and find some other sources as well.
And Brady, so just to answer maybe some of your question, if something ranked as number seventeen, you still may see some representation of that on the Healing Trail. You know, this was to give us and our consultants, you know, another sort of input into sort of what type of stories and maybe what is most important. But it's not deterministic. It's not like, oh, if you're below thirteen, you're not going to see anything on that subject. That's not how we're using it.
Yeah, one thing I did find that is really valuable in the input that we got, you know, we did see that, you know, all of the list of stories had some importance to people for the most part. But there really was high importance for people showing that connection that the site has to the Sand Creek massacre. So, you know, we probably could have guessed that that would be the case, you know, that's, that's, this is a very unique site because of that, and it was good to see that support from the community that, yes, we want this represented on the site, and it's something that's important for us to share.
You good? So, yeah, Katie, thanks for all that excellent presentation. And I really liked the way that you really, to use Brady's terms, sliced and diced the data. You know, in particular, that Venn diagram that you did to sort of prioritize, you know, what were the prominent themes? I thought that with some exceptions, the ones that ended up in the middle were the ones that were really the most informative, sort of the least kitschy or ideological. You know, there were things that I think had more substantive information potential behind them. So I was happy to see those, but also glad to know, you know, that this is not deterministic and that, you know, number seventeen could still see some representation. I like the idea of different forms of representation. You know, the concept that maybe one of the themes could just be a statue, and, you know, it could just, or a sculpture. It could be something that could create an opportunity for contemplation. So, you know, without full interpretation and history being told, you know, you could sometimes just looking at a piece of art and understanding that it's named something for a reason in context can be a really moving experience. So I'm looking at some of the questions that you wanted some feedback on, and I'll hit the first one. What visitors would like to think, learn, feel, and do at the site? You know, it's a big site. There's a lot of linear footage along the Healing Trail for a lot of different kinds of interpretation to be offered, for a lot of different kinds of contemplation or learning or doing. And I think it's, you know, it's an opportunity for for folks to be given multiplicity of different experiences. And I think you're well on your way. I think the concept plan is well on its way to that. So, you know, I just like the idea that, you know, I can walk past a bunch of things. I can stop at something that's interesting to me. I can decide, you know, today I want to learn more about history. You know, the next time I come, I want to learn more about nature. You know, and just to have all of those opportunities available. And as a resident, you know, I have the luxury of showing up and visiting for thirty-eight minutes or something. I don't have to make it an all-day thing, and I can get a different feel from it each time I visit, depending on what I'm interested in learning. So that's really what I would like. And then one more thing, just personal to me, is, you know, I'm really excited that the Belmont Butte is being recognized as something that needs some interpretation, and I support that. I think given the issues with the site and the pollution on the site of the actual Belmont Butte, using the poor farm as an opportunity to talk about the history of the Belmont Butte as a sacred site, as a place for processing ore, you know, it was brought down from Boulder Canyon, you know, and how that site is being treated today is a really great educational opportunity as well. Does anybody else want to address any of the questions about the visitor experience? I think you can find them on page ten of your packet. If, and that way you don't have to put it up on the screen again.
I like the list of questions and suggestions that you listed, but I think that I would rather have the community weigh in on them rather than superimpose my thoughts on them at this time.
That's okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't, maybe similar to Michelle, I don't necessarily think my opinion's the most important, but I'll, I'll give it anyway. I um, I think reflection and giving voice to those who don't have a voice is 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 are two things that are really important. And I I think something that's multimodal would be great. You know, we talked about this before. Subtle QR codes that maybe would bring up an audio file and where someone who literally doesn't have voice in our society has voice. And and it's it's subtle, people can either opt in or out, it isn't obtrusive. Me personally, you know, N of one, I would love to be able to walk through this trail and be narrated by different per voices and different perspectives if I want to. And if I don't want to, keep my phone in my car and just walk through and reflect. But I I think giving voice to those who don't in ways that honor your process would be something to consider if it's helpful. But um, I do appreciate the the thorough um, the thorough process. And I guess the one thing I'd say, Katie, too, about the presentation is, I I, for me, the analysis, the summary, the color commentary, the discussion is the thing that I find most useful about these sorts of presentations. And going through the raw data, if there's something really important, I think that's great, we have it all in the packet. I'm really curious to know what your perspective is. And 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 the analysis is is uh is something that's great to spend time on as a board in this context.
Yeah, thank you. It's um, yeah, I love looking at the data and thinking about, all right, what is it telling us? What are the different ways that we can, you know, slice and dice it, like you said? Where do we have, you know, some overlap? What what are we hearing from the community? So I I was really happy to see that we did have um a good response. We did um have great participation. It's good to see people interacting with each other at the community events and kind of sharing their information. It's it's nice to see people really being um passionate about this project and wanting to, you know, see it come to fruition. So those are, those are sort of the 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 big takeaways that have have meant a lot to me. But it's also, like I mentioned, it's good to see that, you know, some of the things that we think are important to the site, that the community supports that as well. You know, the ecological values as well as the history of the site, both really showed up as um, you know, being important, that connection to the land, traditional ecological knowledge. And um, I guess one thing I'd like to share, too, I was out on the site the other day looking at looking at something, and I noticed that there were some patches of of sage and some patches of prickly pear. And, you know, as we've been cleaning up the sites and removing noxious weeds, we're starting to already see bigger areas of native plants um taking hold. And so that's really nice to see the land healing. You know, at, we see it healing already.
Well, thanks for that, and um appreciate your your personal um story there, too. So Katie, I went and looked down through the the five bullet points that you were looking to solicit input from the board on and and realized that in our comments, we at least indirectly touched on each one of them. So I think we're ready to move on, and and thank you for a wonderful presentation. Look forward to seeing you in three months.
Great, thanks so much.
Oh, and also maybe on September twenty second.
All right, sounds good.
All right, thanks, Katie. We're now moving on to item B under Matters. And uh, that is to provide you with uh another update on our Flagstaff Corridor Operations and Management Program. And trying to give Lisa a few um seconds to set up. Uh Lisa Goncalo is our Rec Stewardship Senior Program Manager, and she has sort of become our chief PM on this project, working with a great team. We also uh have Gretchen with our Rangers here, she's on the team. Of course, Jeff is our, and Janelle are project sponsors, so it is quite a big team. And but Lisa's gonna be uh walking us through this update and let you know where we're at and what's on sta- uh tap in terms of implementation.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. So I'm here to provide an update on our Flagstaff Mountain Operations and Management Project. Uh, we'll briefly cover a little bit of the historical background, a review of existing conditions, past visitor management actions, planning guidance that supports the project, as well as, I think, what we're all more more interested in maybe, will be the project update as well as anticipated next steps. Next slide. Before I begin talking about history, I just wanted to give a big thank you to the O S and P Cultural Stewardship Work Group who helped provide this information, which I think is pretty important to frame how these areas have changed over time. So in nineteen oh five, more intensive recreational development of Flagstaff Mountain began with a proposal to build a wagon road to the summit. The project was heavily boosted by the Daily Camera, whose editor complained about the dangerous and impassable conditions of the Gregory Canyon Road at that time. The road project was approved in nineteen oh six by the County Commission, and construction was completed by the end of December of that year. Although the road was initially heralded as a great success, early complaints were made about how narrow the route was, and these unacceptable conditions led to more work on the road in nineteen twenty-five and nineteen twenty-six. Next slide. So Flagstaff Road and particularly Panorama Point became a destination for picnickers, large group gatherings, and beefsteak fry parties. However, some visitors began to partake in unruly behavior. As called out in this Daily Camera article from nineteen twenty, quote, "A visitor to Boulder the other day took a close-up of Panorama Park and pronounced it rotten. He looked around and saw a lot of back alley refuse, bottles, cans, watermelon rinds. These things do not burn," it said. Wouldn't some baskets and a little public education in the way of signs be a good thing for the condition of the ground around the shelter house on Flagstaff? Let's keep our parks clean. Next slide. Fast forward to today, and the unruly behavior is very much the same, if not a little bit more uh advanced. Illegal behavior on Flagstaff includes vandalism like graffiti, litter and broken glass, driving under the influence, and illegal fires. These violations are also occurring primarily at nighttime, after nine PM, but currently, we're observing very low compliance with this regulation. The photos shown here have all been taken in the last six months, and so the activity is ongoing. And unfortunately, just last night, there was uh two more law enforcement incidents that occurred after hours uh within the Flagstaff Corridor. Next slide. So we've touched the board uh quite a few times on past management actions that staff have undergone, so I won't get into too much detail. Uh, but brief efforts have included the installation of gates updated signage as well as updated regulations. Next slide. Planning guidance for Flagstaff Mountain was included in the West Trail Study Area Plan that was adopted in two thousand and eleven as the Western Mountain Parks HCA and Flagstaff sub-area. As a part of the process, the West TSA established four overarching planning goals shown here in green, which are quality of visitor experience, protection and restoration of natural and cultural resources, visitor access opportunities, and the physical sustainab- sustainability of the trail system. These planning goals provide the overarching guidance for the Flagstaff project and the project objectives, and they nest nicely underneath them and are in alignment. Next slide. As staff consider how best to strike the careful balance of decreasing illegal act and criminal activities after hours while also continuing to provide a safe and welcoming experience for visitors, the team is focused on enhancing the three Es, which we consider engineering, education, and enforcement. These were established by the Interagency Visitor Use Management Council, or a fun acronym of IVUMC. Engineering is intended to use site design solutions to encourage or discourage appropriate uses. Education is intended to modify visitor behavior, adjust visitor attitudes and expectations. And lastly, enforcement can be used to implement all management strategies as needed by restricting or prohibiting access to specific locations at particular times or by types of behavior. Elements of all three Es are needed to have the management solution be successful. Next slide. As you're aware, the original project scope included the entirety of the Flagstaff Road Corridor up to the five-mile mark, which is Green Mountain Summit. However, in order to move forward more quickly with actionable items on the ground, the scope was then narrowed to the first one-point-two miles of Flagstaff. And staff have been focused on efforts to enhance each of the three Es, as previously mentioned, to increase compliance, as I'll cover in more detail a little bit later, which for this stretch of road includes gating and closing trailheads at night, as well as permanent closures of pull-offs. The narrowed scope will also allow staff to learn from these actions prior to expanding work to the rest of the Flagstaff Road Corridor. And I wanted to just make a note that while gates and closures were appropriate for the first one-point-two miles, there is opportunity for trailhead improvements as well as pull-off improvements and access points that could include hardening of the surface, wheel stops, uh striping and signage, for example. I also wanted to take a moment to thank the climbing community for preemptively reaching out to us, express their concerns about the possible closures of important pull-offs uh to the climbing community around the two-point-one and two-point-six mile marks of Flagstaff Road, which include Crown Rock and Contact Corner. We appreciate them meeting with us, and we look forward to continued engagement as the project moves forward. Next slide. While I want to move more quickly to begin implementation, we also recognize that nightly gate closures is a new operation for O S and P. And want to take the time necessary to think through a list of considerations to make it as seamless as we can for the public. On the screen are some examples of operational and engineering considerations staff have been working through, which I believe on our screen here might be a little occluded, so I can, I can read those for you. Staff have also solicited feedback from neighboring open space agencies who use gates for nightly closures, including Jefferson County, who had quite a lot of uh learning to do after the gate closure of Lookout Mountain Road. Uh, we've also reached out to Boulder County, Douglas County, Eagle County, Colorado Springs, and Lakewood to learn of their um their experiences with gates. All of them expressed a bit of a learning curve with unanticipated vandalism and malfunctions to the gates, particularly those that are solar-powered. Agencies with gates that need to be manually opened and closed, they use a mix of staffing or security services to um complete the task. This week, I met with Colorado Security Services, or C S S, a company that we currently use to close and open the restrooms at Chautauqua daily, and they're happy to add Panorama Point to both unlock and lock the gates. So we're working with them to get a quote and to provide the service by the time the infrastructure's in place. Staff also met with OTAC, a civil engineering company, to review the Panorama Point trailhead and provide recommended improvements to support safe and efficient vehicle and pedestrian circulation, access control, and compliance with applicable design standards. And so reading through some of the considerations for both operationally and for the engineering side, operationally, it's, when we put gates up, who's gonna close them? Who's gonna clear the trailhead? Who's gonna lock them after hours? Who's gonna unlock them at five AM in the morning? If we decide to lock the gates at night, then a vehicle is left in there unattended. What happens to that? Do we wanna lock them at night? How do we wanna operate with that? What type of signage is needed? What's a number to call if you do get locked in? And who's gonna handle any repairs that happen in terms of vandalism um to the infrastructure itself? And engineering, uh looking at safety considerations for both vehicle and bicycles. We're looking at adding infrastructure closer to the road because we don't want to encourage people parking or parallel parking close to the road. So what does that look like? What is the distance that we need to maintain from the road uh to allow for safe vehicle and bicycle traffic? What's covered there is, does existing configuration make sense? And so Panorama Point has been around for a long time. What are things that we can do, not just from an infrastructure, to close the the trailhead, but to also improve its configuration and the way that it functions currently? We also confirmed with Boulder County Transportation, um these ideas that we had, that we're on the right track, and uh bidding and contracting for implementation is underway. Next slide. So beginning with engineering, uh this is a quick image of the scope. So first one-point-two miles of Flagstaff Road. Uh, there's two trailheads, Panorama Point and the Halfway House. Seven undesignated pull-offs were identified, beginning at number one, which is directly across from the Gregory Canyon Trailhead. Next slide. So a little history and background on Panorama Point Trailhead. Here's an image um from nineteen ten of someone looking out onto the cityscape, which has changed a little bit, I think, since then, a little bit. Panorama Point was originally called Huggins Park after Charles E. Huggins, and Huggins began to build a place, he says, that, quote, "Will have tables, benches, a merry-go-round, and all the attractions for a pleasant time at a first-class small park." That was from nineteen oh eight. In nineteen nineteen nineteen, Panorama Park became the official name, winning the vote of the Planning Commission over Lakeview Park. Another quote, "Panorama, besides being more comprehensive," it was pointed out at the Commissioners' meeting, "when combined with the word 'park,' forms a pleasant alliteration." From nineteen nineteen. Next slide. So as we were digging through the archives, uh we found this master plan from nineteen thirty-seven that showed the original configuration, or maybe not the most original, but one of the original-ish configurations um and aerials of the Halfway House Trailhead and the Panorama Point Trailhead, which, if you've been up there lately, looks very similar to what's currently up there. So, yeah, again, taking an opportunity to to rethink uh what this looks like now and if there's opportunities for improvement. Next slide. So the existing layout has two points of entry on that right side of the screen or the north side directionally. Vehicle traffic then flows clockwise where there's a stop sign. And just behind that sign is a very large tree that I tried to highlight there, that obstructs the view of oncoming vehicle and bike traffic. It also shades the crosswalk, which makes it hard to see if anyone is crossing there, given um the speeds that sometimes we see on Flagstaff Road. The orange shaded teardrop is a little hard to see uh for us in person, but that used to be um like a, we don't wanna call it a guard shack, but it was a hmm, a gateway, a sha- gate shack, yeah. Either way. Staff, staff with testary structure, staff were there to uh collect fees back in the day. And so that had been out of function for a very long time. It's obviously not how we collect fees today, um and it fell into disrepair. So it's since been removed, and now it's more of a standalone uh island with some vegetation. So not really forming a function anymore. Next slide. So as we mentioned, we did a site visit with OTAC, the Civil Engineering Company, to show them the trailhead and to get their initial thoughts and answer any questions that we, they might have. And one of the questions that came out was, has the direction of travel for vehicles always been this way? And I didn't have the answer, but to my knowledge, yes, it it's functioned that way. And they had some things to say, just some recommendations of, if we rearrange traffic to go counterclockwise, so now the stop sign is over on the north side of, or the right side of the screen, you're bypassing that wonderful tree that shades um the line of sight for vehicles and bicycle traffic on the road. So your sightlines improve quite a bit. The other piece was it, it seemed more intuitive to them that vehicles would, as they were coming up Flagstaff Road, would try to pull into that first driveway as opposed to passing the initial driveway uh to get into that second one. And actually, of course, like clockwork, when they were up there, someone did try to do that. They pulled right in, and then we were trying to say, ah, no, like, and then they saw the sign that says, "Do not enter," and they moved around to the other side. So this also shows that this, the trailhead is actually really conducive in its current layout to be able to gate um and fence it without too much uh of a challenge. So the metal fencing that we proposed just is an interim, it's not permanent. But we, again, as a pilot, we wanna understand, if we put infrastructure here, what are the impacts? What are we hearing? Is it successful? So having interim in- infrastructure will help us um make adjustments later down the road. Um, and then two double vehicle gates on either side. So in theory, a security company that we hire can do a sweep of the trailhead beginning um after nine PM, kind of move everyone along, they can close the entry gate um as they come in, and then they can close the exit gate on the way out, um pretty seamless. So we are expecting OTAC's official reports and comments on the information that we sent and from our meeting this week. So hopefully, we'll get that soon, and we can start moving towards implementation. Next slide. Staff are also exploring solutions to use infrastructure to close the parking um at Halfway House at nine PM. But this is uh, a little more coordination needed at this location. The current layout of pool and spaces is more challenging to close. The current, I'm sorry. It also provides overflow parking to the Flagstaff House Restaurant at night, as well as the Halfway House Shelter, which is available for shelter reservations uh during the day. It is already closed semi-permanently with the same metal fencing that we're gonna um propose for Panorama Point uh when the Boulder Star is lit. And so we use a variable messaging sign there um to to make sure that the public is aware. But those metal fences are not fun to move, especially if we're talking about doing it uh twice a day. So we're looking at alternative solutions. Hopefully, more to come soon on that. Next slide. Lastly, I wanted to highlight um the coordination that's been going uh with Boulder County Transportation, as well as internally with our staff to start closing off some of these pull-offs. And this is just a couple of examples for the treatments that we agreed with Boulder County Transportation, which make the most sense for these locations. On number one, back in that tree, there is a no parking sign. So that is the existing regulation for that particular pull-off, um and not high compliance for that either. The bollards- The bollards are, I guess they're flexible delineators, so they're breakaway posts, and these are not to scale. So these are a lot larger than what would actually be out in the field. And we anticipate this work will begin in the coming months. Do we try the video?
[inaudible]
Yeah, not at all.
They're going to test it.
I don't want to ruin the surprise, but. Well, I will continue, and then maybe we can watch it at the end, fingers crossed. So one of the challenges the staff have experienced and voiced with enforcement is competing priorities with other calls for service, opportunities for other overtime events, and low staffing experience by some of our local law enforcement agencies and our OSMP rangers. So rangers have been working closely with our police, Boulder Police Department and Boulder County Sheriff's Office to increase presence on Flagstaff. And as we identified in the written update, Panorama Point now has two web cameras operating 24 hours a day and is visible at night. And interestingly, Anna Reid, who's with our Human Dimensions team, who worked very closely to get these web cameras installed, happened to notice some red and blue lights flashing. And what you'll see in the video, fingers crossed, is six instances in the same night, on July 13th, beginning at 9:15 PM, where it's a mix of, of response, but it's BPD officers, as well as sheriff's officers, deputies responded. And they just did a routine patrol of the trailhead. So no one's supposed to be parking there after 9:00 PM at night. That is the parking regulation that exists currently. They show up, everyone sees the lights, they kind of get back in their vehicles, and they move along. Within 20 minutes or so of every time they do this, a new flood of 15 vehicles come in, park, they do the same thing, and then it goes on. I think the video only shows three instances of it, for the sake of time, but, yeah, it's, it's 1:00 in the morning, it's 4:00 in the morning, it's, it's constant stream of cars throughout the night. And so in terms of tying the three Es together, it's kind of showing how, yes, we could have endless enforcement, that would be the dream, but it, it would probably be very inefficient as well, without the engineering piece to support that. So having someone, if it's a security company, going in, clearing the trailhead at night, locking the gates after they leave, patrol can then focus their energies on something else, whether it be additional calls for service or patrolling further up the mountain. Next slide. So the following E, education. It's, it's last but not least, education is one of our key components that we have really been focusing on as, as one of the three Es. It's, we've had a lot of social media involvement, we've had reporters, Facebook, Twitter, all of the things. And a lot of it was centered around creating awareness around extra patrol focuses on Flagstaff after hours, that there is no parking after 9:00 PM, variable messaging signs, which we can thank our, our fire work group for supporting us with those. The variable messaging signs, we do move them throughout the system. We have two of them currently. Both of them were previously placed at Six and Baseline, one at Panorama Point Trailhead. And we recently just relocated one to the south end of our system, just to create awareness in a different part of our system. But we are very malleable, and we can update them and change the, the wording within a certain character and that number whenever the need arises. So we want to keep them, by moving around, we also want to keep them novel, changing the messaging, so people don't become numb to the messaging that we're trying to communicate. We have, internally, we have our trailhead staff, and they're busy removing trash from Flagstaff, and they're also find interesting items, like the front bumper of a car there on the side of the road that was found. We have volunteer cleanup events on Flagstaff, and we run into visitors like David Dale here, who's, again, pictured there, but covered, staying next to our very own Dave Barry. David Dale rides his bike on Flagstaff almost daily, and as he rides, he notices where trash is left on the ground, and he'll come back after his ride to come and pick it up. And so he's interacted with our staff quite a bit, and grateful for him for volunteering to, to do that on his own accord. And then lastly, I wanted to highlight the annual Trash Bash that is hosted by the climbing community, where they remove between 300 to 400 pounds of trash from Flagstaff every year, and it's open to all who would like to help. It's coming in September, if anyone is interested in, in signing up and, and joining that effort. So next steps, we're going to continue our implementation of the initial 1.2 miles for this narrower scope. Continue the verbal messaging signs, which will be updated messaging and locations throughout the years. Continue our collaborative enforcement to increase extra patrols on Flagstaff. Begin to implement the Panorama Point Trailhead overnight parking closure. Implement the pull off closures. Continue tracking data and a little preview. Next month in September, you'll be getting results from the trailhead utilization study that was completed by our Human Dimensions team. So it'll be exciting to see, and maybe there's some learning we can do for the Flagstaff project from that outcome as well. And then we'll be back in November with another update. That says questions, just in case. I was, in case you were wondering. Oh, yeah, well, okay, everyone, positive thinking.
The meeting right here.
All of a sudden, the video portion just. It's the police department showing up, moving people along.
Are these people just hanging out? I mean, is the only kind of violation that they're there? Or are a lot of these people doing something else bad?
Maybe that's a Gretchen after this, maybe you.
Yeah, I'd love to hear from Gretchen. I've got, I've got questions for Gretchen specifically, too, but I didn't want to.
Yeah. What's the intent of the, is this just a clear, or are they looking for?
I'm just curious, you know, there's no sound, just a little color commentary and what we're watching?
Gretchen will love to answer that. So this is later on at 10:20, and there's two views facing one north, one south. So here comes another officer.
Are these publicly viewable, or is this just internal? Oh, yeah. I think we can get this to go viral somehow, Lisa.
I like the way you're thinking. So the last one we have is at 1:00 in the morning, just one vehicle parked there, and this is a deputy that comes through.
You thinking this will be like the Boulder Yule log? People just put it up and watch it on endless.
I mean, who knows? I don't know. I don't know.
You're looking for your kids to see if they're making out.
It's part of the education. I'm just, I'm just spitballing here, you know?
There was my son, what is he doing? Making out with his girlfriend.
Come on. All right, so we've got, so thanks, Lisa, appreciate that a lot. And Brady, you got some questions?
Yeah, Gretchen, thanks for coming. I'd love to hear anything you want to share with us, really, because the last time we spoke as a group with you was at a retreat. And I think we were all, I'll speak for myself, but I think I'd probably speak for most of us, that we were all struck by the challenge that you and others face, sometimes every night up there. And so I'd love to hear about how things are doing, if you're hopeful with how things are trending, and your candid, if you would, take on our, on, on our plan and, and the strengths and weaknesses of it.
Yeah. Yeah, to answer your question about what is happening with those folks up at Panorama, I speak anecdotally. Before I became a supervisor, I was in the field a lot more often, and I would do night patrols until midnight, sometimes a week at a time. And what we would see, see again is anecdotal, but it's, it's, there's a lot of alcohol consumption and marijuana consumption, and we can see that in the trash that's left behind, and we hear that from the folks that pick up the trash. They report a significant amount of the trash, and just opening the trash bins on Flagstaff is a good visual exercise to see what proportion of that is just alcohol bottles and consumption of marijuana. But again, that's anecdotal. There's a lot of people out there. There are definitely people that are just up there looking at the sights. But because there's so much, even if a small percentage of that, or a minor percentage of that, is alcohol consumption and marijuana consumption, they're all driving home, they're all driving down the mountain, any times that, by how many people are out there, and it's, it's significant. And then, yeah, overall, the project, how I feel, yeah, I, I've been really privileged to work with Lisa, so working on the core team on this project, and I am very hopeful. I am very hopeful, especially when, when Lisa talks about the three Es, because when we just have enforcement, that's what we've learned, it's, it's, it's not going to work. You have to have all, all three together. And so now that we're having a comprehensive plan to put all of that together, I am hopeful. David Dale, who picks up trash, he wrote an email to us, and he said, "He's starting to see less trash." Again, that's anecdotal, we don't have numbers on that, but it's a little hopeful, you know, even when we can do a little bit, at least for that moment in time when law enforcement is up on the mountain, folks are heading home, they're not drinking, they stopped drinking, they stopped smoking, and they're, they're headed down the mountain. So at that point in time, it is decreasing crime. It's just going to take time to figure out what it takes to, to make that last.
Yeah, I, I called you today. Do you think it's still okay to do that?
I, I think if, you know, just be sensitive to, if, if the letter is making most of the points you want to make, you don't have to reiterate everything in the interest of time.
Yeah, I think it, this really covers what I was thinking about this project, and I think because Tom Isaacson, who wrote the letter to the board, I don't know that these things make it out to the public. So I wanted to kind of read most of it into the record, because he speaks so succinctly and sophisticated to this particular topic. But I won't read every single word, I'll skip a paragraph or so. He says that he is, Tom, Tom Isaacson, this is a letter he sent, I think, yesterday. "I'm the Chair of the Board of the Boulder Climbing Community and its Advocacy Committee. The schedule precludes him from joining tonight. The bottom line is the BCC supports the objectives of improving safety, reducing crime, and reducing fire risk emanating from the problem behaviors on Flagstaff, and we have no objection to the particular ways in which staff currently intends to address these, those problems. If, however, staff someday seeks to close parking pullouts further up Flagstaff Road, that would have serious adverse consequences for climber access to this historic climbing destination. While such potential expansion of the closures is not the issue before OSBT, in the current matters from the department, meaning tonight, OSBT should make it clear that any further parking proposed closures would raise important public policy concerns that would warrant a robust public process, rather than a department update, to assure, assure a full analysis of the costs and benefits, particularly including the, the adverse effects on climbers." I'm going to skip one paragraph around context and details. And then he says, "Access to the bouldering on Flagstaff has long depended on the pullouts along the road, especially those within a few hundred yards of the Crown Rock Trailhead. There is not nearly enough paved parking to accommodate the climbers and other legitimate visitors to the area. We have carefully inventoried and measured all of the parking of relevance to boulders. We have presented our findings to staff. By our calculations, some 90% of parking that is relevant to boulders is outside of any paved area." And he attaches a map. "Staff currently reports that we are not concerned about, or correctly reports that they're not concerned about limitations on parking in the bottom 1.2 miles of the road, as that is not typically used by boulders. But because this is described as a pilot program with the, with only an initial scope, we are understandably concerned that this could someday be used to justify significant reductions in parking access further up the road in areas of great interest to us. If, I won't get into all the possible permutations that such an approach could take, including paving, existing dirt pullouts, adding gates, completely removing a parking area, etc. This is too hypothetical at this point, and we don't have the results of the initial pilot program. And these engineering options are just part of a broader package of enforcement and education, which do not reduce climber access. It would be appropriate to pursue this initial pilot program through a department update, but closures further up the road could result in serious loss of historic access to climbers, who are not the cause of the problems at issue. Existing plans do not provide a basis for such closures. I was involved in the 2005 Visitor Master Plan as a community member, and 2010 to 11 West Trail Study Area Plan as a member of OSBT. He served 2010 to 2020, that was 10 years, whoa. Though, though climber and hiker use of the parking along the road was well-known at the time of those plans, neither plan proposed any such reduction in daytime parking access to this area. Such a proposal would have generated strong opposition." He makes a, a couple of more great points in the, the last couple of paragraphs, but I'll stop there. And, and just, we'll say that because, you know, you showed the timeline earlier, this started in 2021, which was the beginning of my OSBT term, I was privy to a lot of these discussions early on, and, and have been talking about this problem for quite a long time. I have, I share a lot of the same concerns that Shannon has, and then also that Tom wrote in his email, that, that this will mean additional parking closures for people who are good actors. I mean, I've said this from the beginning, that, that good actors get penalized for the, the minority of bad actors out there. And there are a lot of good people, families with young children who, who want to go play on the rocks, and boulders, and trail runners, who are good citizens of this community, who will get penalized by the closure of additional parking. And I'll just add that while I, I, I know that the, the department respects climbers because you have a great relationship here, and, and you do seek climbers' input, the, the, the experience that I'll, I'll, I'll always have is when you piloted a parking, a nighttime parking, a nighttime permit program for recreationalists, which was never going to work for climbers. Asking climbers to, to apply for a permit seven days in advance, or even young families for that matter, to, who, who can't plan that far ahead, or other folks, seven days was never going to work for climbers, and, and then you called it a failed experiment, a failed pilot, and then you just gave up on it. And it seemed like a, just something that you wanted to tick off your box, "Oh, we tried this for climbers and it didn't work." It didn't feel authentic to me, going through the, the proposal, and the execution, and then the closure of the program. So I feel very nervous that, about what the, what will happen beyond the 1.2 miles.
Yeah, I, I'll just reiterate a little bit of, I think I said this a couple of months ago, but I, I think we have to balance the need for public safety with the need to meet our charter requirements to allow the public to experience and enjoy the open space values of the open space mountain parks, of which Flagstaff is a component. And, and I also, just personally, you know, I, I like serendipitous occasions, you know, you're driving up Flagstaff, you see the trail crosses Flagstaff four times, and you go, you know, it'd be great to get out of the car and hike up that trail for a quarter mile and get back to the car, you know, get my little kid up on the, the trail for a minute. Not everybody wants to climb from Gregory Canyon all the way to the top, you know? And it's not just climbers, it's just hikers, that the hiking trail crosses the road over and over again. And if you can have a serendipitous pullout parking spot and go experience a trail for a segment that you feel like, you know, hiking, that's great. So I just think that, that the message of closing everything down is, is just putting safety over all. And while I think safety is important, and I hate to be the one everybody's pointing a finger at when, you know, if and when there's a fire or some calamity that occurs, but we're not here to create a completely safe, bubble-wrapped environment. And I, I would love to see a thoughtful design. Design that still allows for those serendipitous occasions to occur and not just, you know, focus on closing parking spots. That, you know, that's just where I fall. Michelle, on your comments, um, I agree with you about that. And, um, and then just in general, I think, um. What you've done, um, on the slides around Panorama Point is show me that. Um, all the considerations, like what you, what do you do with the cars that are still parked there after nine o'clock? What circulation pattern I was literally just up there and thinking, this is kinda weird. Um, you know, you're thinking about all those things and, and you're smart and, you know, I, yeah, you're smart. And, and that's not something to be embarrassed about. We're very proud of you and thank you. So I'm gonna just like shut up and, you know, let you guys keep doing, doing your study. You're working with good consultants and, uh, hopefully you'll come up with a really good design. Cause I think you're asking the right questions.
Um, a few more comments. Um, that was funny, by the way, and I hope your ribs are feeling okay. First of all, Lisa, that was such a great presentation, that was so fun and the historical context. Um, so, great job. That was super engaging, yeah. Um, two, I agree with the, the other board members and Tom Isaacson, I think. Um, I, I was at the meeting that you had recently with the climbing community. I mean, it, it, it remains, you know, best in class relationship between an agency and a climbing community, frankly. And so while we are here to say, we're, you know, I agree, there's some concerns. That being said, I think you're doing all the right things. Um, I'm hopeful that there's some engineering solution that isn't gonna exclude the climbers and isn't gonna require. Hundreds of thousands of operational dollars every night, so, I mean, who knows? So, again, you're smart, hopefully you'll figure it out. But, uh, but we are, I, I, I will agree with my colleagues here that we're concerned about loss of, of access. Um, I guess the other thing I'd say is, kind of along those lines, could you, who? Who was using the pullouts, the, the two pullouts that you're putting, the, the kind of breakaway barriers, I don't know what they, the, the, that you're closing? Who, who was, was using, who were the people that were, were using those? And what do you think the implication is? I'm just curious to using that as a microcosm for what could possibly happen upstream.
I, all anecdotal, um, but the, uh, one across from Gregory Canyon Trailhead is overflow parking for the trailhead primarily, we believe. The one further up, that was number two, um, is mostly people trying to find a place to, to park and. After hours, enjoy the view, but then also. Other activities.
Got it.
Which has been our experience, but again, it's not to say that, you know, that's everyone that parks there, it's all anecdotal.
But it is possible with the closure of that first pullout that there will be people who came up during the right hours, who now won't be able to find a place to park.
It's already prohibited parking.
Right.
So there's a sign that says.
So, so they're already breaking the rules?
No, yeah, that's, we're trying to help them not break the rules.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
Michelle, do you have anything else? Okay, I just have one more quick thing. Uh, noticed on the screen, um, you had a slide of a. Uh, an old newspaper article about the guy who did the survey of Flagstaff Scenic Drive, I think it was called back at the, at the time. Um, and the notion was to get it all the way up to Magnolia. And thereby connect Boulder to Netherland by a different route. Um, of course, you can't do that now unless you can get up Forsyth Canyon Road sixty HA with something. That's pretty, pretty, you know, either hiking or dirt bike or something like that, it's a pretty rough road. Um, could you send me or everybody that article? I'd just like to read it. Um, cause it was fascinating just to see that history and what was planned.
Yeah, in fact, if you have any specific questions or articles that you'd be interested in. I give a shout out to our, uh, cultural stewardship team, cause they're amazing and they have a lot of this already cataloged, so, yeah, just let us know.
Oh, thanks so much. Yeah, I'd love to read that.
Got it.
Dan, looks like second to last agenda item back.
Lisa, Jeff for support. Yeah, we're gonna, uh, transition into another site that has been beloved by the community over the years that. Had experienced yet again, a very significant, uh, event. And, uh, we felt like it was time to update you on something that actually happened in November. Uh, and we wanted to update you on because we're starting to gain further clarity on what the scope of that event was. And the implications that that event has to the future of the site and where we're at in terms of. Assessing what options we may have available. So Hillary Dees, uh, is going to be leading us through a presentation, an update on the Boulder Falls closure. And also some good news, a little update on the Chapman Drive project. Because we're starting to hit our milestones and strides in terms of that site, so I'll turn things over to our Visitor Infrastructure Senior Manager.
Good evening. I have a very picture-heavy presentation, so it's sad to see this big square blob that will be in the middle of all my.
Yes, if you've got your computers, turn them on now.
Sorry, I failed to log into the Zoom ahead of time.
Just give us a moment to start out the tech.
I just got logged in. Can you, can you make me a presenter?
Yeah, I'll promote you.
What? Alright, so this says Chapman Drive Trailhead and Boulder Falls Update. Um, so like Dan mentioned, I'm the Visitor Infrastructure Senior Manager. And this slide is going to advance. Yes, um, so I'm here to give a very brief and positive update on the status of Chapman Drive Trailhead. Um, here's a schematic, uh, conceptual drawing that went to the. Um, contractors and it is looking like that in real life, which is always a very fun process to watch. Um, just a quick overview of this project itself, it was identified in the West Trail Study Area for Improvement. Uh, as lo- as well as a separated use, so separating vehicle from non-vehicle traffic, um, to cross Boulder Creek. Uh, and in addition to that, new infrastructure, including horse trailer parking to open up the larger Flagstaff area to equestrians. Additional bike racks to support multimodal access, um, and accessible picnic table. As well as accessible trails around the trailhead itself. And we added a bike fixing station with tools and a pump for folks who are, um, riding the bikes and need to make a quick pit stop. Um, somewhere either on the canyon or maybe they've come up Flagstaff and down Chapman. Um, so this is a really great amenity that we're adding to a lot of our trailheads where there is a lot of bike use. So I'm really excited to be able to offer that at the trailhead. The underpass is now open, which is extremely exciting. The bridge has been installed, the new bridge has been installed. Uh, you can't yet access it, so there is still a detour over the vehicle bridge. Uh, but we do anticipate just in the next four to. Six, eight-ish weeks, uh, that the whole thing will be open and that access will be restored, there will be no more closures, no more detours. And you can ride your bike from here all the way up to the top of Flagstaff going over Chapman and not have to. Be on the same roadway as a vehicle, which is extremely exciting for, I think, a lot of the public. So, very good news. Uh, here's a few photos, um, Bridge Day install was really cool, so they prefabricated the bridge, trucked it in and then craned it into place. Um, and that's a picture of the detour there on the right. It's a very quick detour over the bridge. Here's a photo of some of the grading work and then a very cool rain garden that is kind of the center island. Um, so it not only helps direct the flow of traffic and horse trailer parking and se- and separate that use a little bit, and that way it also is a water. Retention system, um, and helps with water quality, um, in the canyon. Which is another feature that we've been adding to all of our trailhead redesigns. Um, so before I move into Boulder Falls, is there any questions about Chapman Drive Trailhead?
Yeah, I just noticed, um, from that, I think the slide before, that the, uh. I think the abutments for the new pedestrian bridge have really changed that riffle under the bridge. Like the creek flows really differently now, huh?
I would have to take your word for that. I assume that it was done to not impact the creek, but I guess I don't know.
The permitting that would have been necessary for the bridge would have had to ensure that it didn't affect the hydrology of the creek.
Okay. Thanks. That's great. Any other questions from the board about the Chapman Drive project?
Great.
Getting thumbs up, looks neat. Thank you.
Yeah, very excited to see this one done. So now Boulder Falls, this one is a little, another one of our problematic favorite spots on the system. Uh, problematic in the sense that it is geologically unique and we just realized, um. Through some recent analysis, how unique it is. So it has been closed since November of last year. We experienced a significant, um, some would call it catastrophic rockfall event over Veterans Day weekend. Um, so it's been closed since then, but before I get into, you know, kind of what happened, why did it happen and how are we going to manage it? I wanted to give a brief summary of the Boulder Falls, you know, area, if you haven't been up there. So it's a very short five hundred feet from parking area to the end of the falls. Um, it's a net elevation gain of fifty feet, it's rated as easy. It also sees extremely high visitation, two hundred and sixty-one thousand visits were recorded in twenty twenty-three. It also serves as climbing access to the Dream Canyon complex. Um, and it has been closed since November, fortunately. Uh, but it is, if you have been there, you know that it is one of the best places to take people who have, who are visiting. It's so easy to get to, it's so cool at the end, the payoff is so nice, uh, and I think that's one of the reasons it's so popular, uh, you know? Even in the winter, you can drive by and that parking lot is totally full and there's people parked up and down the canyon on either side. Um, so I, we recognize the importance of this place for the community and I should have known. Gotten the memo about putting historic photos in here, cause I found some really fun ones from, from the falls, um, that didn't make it in the presentation, but I could share if you'd like. Um, so just to orient folks, the, oh. It's, this is mostly visible, um, so the highway is there on the right, um, Colorado Highway one nineteen, Boulder Canyon. Um, and the falls just, it's an in and out. Oh, thanks Leah, and Leah is pointing out the falls directly under, yeah, underneath that, um, the arrow, you can just barely see. We have been managing rockfall at the site, um, since at least nineteen ninety-three. So going back to nineteen ninety-three, we've done some various forms of erosion control and gabion baskets. And so those are big metal wire baskets that get filled with stone, wired together. And they are a mass system retaining wall, meaning that the mass of the stone in its aggregate form must be more than the mass of the thing it's holding back. And, uh, we've added gabion baskets over the years to increase the height to manage very minor rockfall. Um, so it's serving both, uh, um, erosion control, retaining wall and rockfall. Um, needs for us. Then from, you know, two thousand nine to the flood, uh, we did some minor rock scaling and removal material from behind the gabions. Just to make sure that there was space for if there was rockfall, it had something to like fall into and then, um, stop moving farther down the canyon. Um, and then from the flood onward, we've mostly just been removing that material from behind the gabions. To make sure that there's space for rockfall. Uh, we have also in twenty nineteen installed additional erosion netting to try and get vegetation cover, uh, restored there. It's mixed results, as you can think in the canyon. Um, it was closed for five years post-flood, uh, and then it's been closed since November. So in recent history, it's been closed almost as much as it's been open, unfortunately. Uh, here's a, another site orientation a little closer to the falls, the falls there are on the right. Um, and then I circled the viewing area, so that's kind of like three stacked switchbacks where people can just congregate and there's always. Tons of people there, especially in the summer. I mean, no, there's plein air painters, like spending the day painting the falls, there's young families, there's visitors, there's anybody you can think of, and then the. Um, the climbing access is actually above the upper gabion, so it leaves, there's two folks wearing black down that bottom left-hand corner. Um, the climbing access leaves from right about where they're at and then climbs very steeply up that hill and through a keyhole. To access the, um, upper Dream Canyon. The squares are both like two gabion basket walls that we have, uh, installed there and then, um, the trail is, you can see is there in the bottom. So what happened during this rock, rockfall event? Um, if you're looking at a computer, you can see that there are now some very large boulders that are. Probably at least ten foot by five to ten feet wide, uh, that have made their way all the way down to the creek. And in fact, the one on the far right that has two arrows, the far right arrow, that stone boulder. Uh, bounced all the way up the other side of the creek and then back down to the creek. So bouncing stone is not usually a verb I use, um, for those big boulders, but there was. So much velocity with these stones that they literally went up the other side of the creek and then landed, um, and finished, uh, down in the creek. This is a photo, uh, before and after of the gabion baskets, so Shannon and Wilson did the analysis for us, um, again, so they also did it post-flood. So we've got some really great post-flood and then post this rockfall event photos to compare. This is a photo of the upper gabion basket, that one that's a little bit higher up on the slope. Uh, the polygon on the left one is showing the same as the arrow on the right and it's no longer there. It was, um, as the consultants described, vaporized in this rockfall event, meaning that they were not able to find where the stones went. So that specific gabion basket was hit with so much force that it, like, cleaved it off of the retaining wall system that it was part of. And then dispersed the stone, like so thoroughly down the hillside that they just, like, couldn't find it anymore. Um, you also notice that the tree behind, or sorry, in front of the gabion baskets no longer has a crown. And so that tree also has a, an impact scar. Pretty high up on the trunk and it was hit with sufficient force to cause whiplash that caused the crown to come off of the tree and the crown is now located uphill of the trunk. I'm not sure how much force is needed for that, but it's a lot, I think. Um, here's some more photos of the impact scars, um, throughout the falls, these are both trees that are much closer. The one on the left is there at the viewing platform, um, that's Gaben and one of the consultants on the trail. Thankfully, there was nobody there and there was no injuries reported because this rockfall did go right over the main area where people congregate. Um, and on the right side, that's another tree impact, that's the one, the crown is actually there a little bit in the bottom right of that photo as well. It's a tree from earlier. Um, and then there was also additional tree impact scars much farther up the canyon, so this analysis. Um, went much farther than the previous one, so post-flood, we went maybe like halfway up from the creek up to the top of the ridge line and this time we said. Let's, let's see what everything is, what all is going on here. So this, this analysis is much, had, covered a much wider area, um, and is a lot richer in information because of that. So a few things I might refer to here moving forward are the Northern Cliffs and the goalie. So the goalie, as you can see, is directly above where the kind of viewing platform viewing area is. And then the, the Northern Cliffs houses the keyhole, um, for the climbing access. Um, and then, like I said, the survey went all the way up to the ridge top, so anything that could come down, uh, we have surveyed now, or Shannon Wilson has surveyed. Uh, the results are, it's fascinating how, uh, geologically unique this area is. So in addition to all the hazards that they recorded, and this is a photo of them talking about the different kinds of hazards. The breadth and the scale of the hazards, uh, was, it was really, uh, powerful for them to talk about. So the, I'm no geologist, so I will use words that I know the, the definition to. Um, but the toppling and wedge features, they're at the top, so. The wedge shapes, they're not the nice wedge shapes where when one stone falls out, the rest of them like wedge tighter together. They unfortunately are shaped in such a way that when one falls out, the next one is more likely to fall out. So rockfall events will beget more rockfall events. Uh, there's also differential erosion, so we have a softer, more easily eratable layer of material on top of. Below some rounded, um, talus. Talus. And so that is also creating scenarios where, you know, the differential weathering causes the, those loose stones to collapse. Which are then supporting the things, the different features on the northern cliffs. There's also overhanging and sheer features. And there are launch features farther up the goalie, which we were generally unknown to us before this most recent analysis. Speaking of farther up the goalie, we were hoping that maybe it got better and all the stone that would ever fall down fell down in this event. And that is very unfortunately not the case. There are very large stones located much closer to the ridge top than we knew previously. And then there are not only toppling hazards, they're now toppling in two different directions down towards where the trail was. In addition to the continuation of the differential erosion, which can lead to small to very large rockfall events. So the conclusions from the consultants is that it poses a very high risk for rockfall and continued rockfall. They contextualize it for us by using the C dot rockfall hazard rating system. And I know that we love being top in class in many things and this would be maybe the exception. I would not like to be the top in class of where the slope geometry, we scored in the most hazardous condition in five of the five categories. Geological conditions, eight of the nine categories, we scored the most hazardous in. And climatic conditions, half of the, half of the scores were in the most hazardous category. Um, they also concluded that rockfall events similar to scale and severity to this November event are likely to continue at the site. Because I was curious, I looked at too, you know, is it just a scale of like not hazardous to very hazardous? And it is, but it's a powers of three scale. So the least hazardous category, you get three points in and then it's nine points and then twenty-seven and then eighty-one. And so it's not just the, it's the most hazardous. It's by a lot, it is the most hazardous in all of these categories. Then there's the risk. What is the risk to the site? If there was no trail below it, would there be a risk? Unfortunately, we do have a trail there and it is an extremely popular trail. Their conclusions were that there was a continued risk for severe injury and fatalities to occur at the site if we were to put the trail back where it was at. That rockfall would likely continue impacting the infrastructure, even if we could do some level of mitigation management. Uh, and that the risks would remain regardless of, you know, we can never mitigate all the risk, I think to an earlier point. You know, we don't want to bubble wrap things, but we do want to make things reasonably safe for folks to visit and make them reasonably aware of the risk. Um, inherent in visiting different sites. Most recently in the two thousand eighteen construction to open the trail back up after the flood. It costs one point two, three million dollars. So it is also a very expensive, short piece of trail that we're trying to manage. With extremely hazardous geology above it. In terms of the risk and hazard management, I did go out on a site visit with head of risk and given this report and. The outlook in this area, we determined that we cannot put the trail back in its previous alignment. So visitation at Boulder Falls, however it looks, will look different than what the public has grown used to after opened up post-flood. We also have, are considering several different alternatives, which I will talk about, very conceptual, high level at this point. Uh, they also wanted, the consultants also were able to articulate a couple of different mitigation measures that we could use. But that remediation would be costly and complicated, no matter what we did. Every single way that we can mitigate will require the use of helicopter and specialty contractors. This is not something that we can do in-house. And then even if we are able to stabilize and mitigate to the nth degree. It's, it will require not insignificant ongoing maintenance. And if there's a rockfall event, the equipment needs to be replaced, either in full or in part. So we're not even talking about like, and we can get it safe. It's, and we can get it safe for now until something else happens. And then there will be another, something similar to this where, you know, is it worth it to do this? Can we do that again? Like what, what will it look like? Some of the stabilization options that they supported were the, uh, the one on the left are forty-foot rods. That are drilled into the rock face to actually keep the rock face kind of held together and then covered in a mesh. There's also targeted scaling. So that's the top right photo and that's where it is what it sounds like. You just pick the loose rock off of it, off the slope and then remove it. That would also mean because we don't want to affect the creek basin or the creek itself, that we would then need to move that stone off-site. Or find somewhere, somewhere else onsite for it. And then, um, other versions of putting large rods and or nets and mesh into the rock in some way, shape or form. Uh, they also said that the, none of these mitigation measures, like we'll need to use all of them in some combination in some way. Cause not all of the types of hazards we have respond well to each of these different methods. So we're also looking at many of these different ones as well as protection measures. So the draped mesh netting, which you see a lot of times on roadways and then the rockfall fence were the final two. Protection options. So should there be a rockfall event, this would protect and reduce the like velocity and the. Energy of the rockfall event. We did look at a couple conceptual alternatives already and we did dismiss considering putting the creek, the trail on the east side of the creek. Um, so right now it's on the west side of the creek. We thought maybe we could put it on the east side. And they did a, not as thorough, but still thorough enough analysis to show that that still had a similar risk profile, risk and hazard profile. As well as really complicated construction. Um, so we have dismissed this alternative. There are talus shoots, overhangs, toppling hazards. It's not really any better than being on the other side. Some of the other conceptual alternatives that we are looking at right now is moving the viewing platform farther back, closer to the canyon mouth. So shortening the trail a little bit. One of the spots that we have identified is right where the climbing access currently takes off. It's the site of some work that we've done that post-flood, where you can still get a really great view of the falls. We were even considering, you know, maybe it's like a two-tiered system or like two-tiered viewing platforms. So that you can get like a little bit higher vantage point. We can have more people congregating there. Uh, and then there, there is one other really great view even farther back, kind of that first jog and elbow out in the creek. You get a great view of the falls from there. Uh, but it is a quite short trail and there's not a ton of places to congregate in that option. And then the other alternative that we will be considering is a permanent closure. If we cannot engineer a trail that has adequate risk management, then we will be considering a permanent closure. We're not there yet. So what we have done is a geotechnical analysis. We've been presented the findings. You now have been presented this as well. We've been in communication with our climbing partners, letting them know about the severity and the ongoing closure. There's been a site visit with risk. We're soliciting additional geotechnical analysis for that area. The viewing platform A and B options that are a little bit closer to the road. We don't know if it's just as dangerous, if it's ten percent or fifty percent less dangerous, like what the risk profile for that specific section is. So as soon as we have that information, we'll be able, be able to develop a preferred alternative. And then we plan on bringing that back hopefully in Q one of next year. And then depending on what that looks like, budget and schedule dependent, we would implement that. I will say the full suite of stabilization and mitigation measures that the consultants provided to us. Was closer to seven million dollars than it was any other number, which is an extremely high number for a quite short trail. Even though it is very, very popular, like at some point there is a conversation of is, not is it worth it? But like, there are so many special spots in our system that need a lot of work and where are our priorities in terms of getting the different work done? And supporting other places on our system as well. I maybe should have ended with Chapman being the, being the happy, we're almost done. Uh, but I also do want to be honest, the public, the information that we've given to the public so far is just that there was a catastrophic rockfall event. And it's closed and people like, the Rangers get questions all the time. When are the falls open? We get CRMs. I've taken my wedding photos there like the last three or four years or anniversary photos. Like I would really love to go back. And we would love to have people go back there, but it is just not safe right now. The gabion baskets, currently the site is untouched. Uh, we have not done any mitigation to the gabion baskets. We're not even sure like how we would start doing that. Uh, they are like toppled over like, so like they fail by toppling. That's a pretty common mechanism of failure, but they like fell and then curled over and then one of them actually just exploded open, which is not a normal failure mechanism. It was hit with so much force that this metal didn't bend and like bulge out. It literally broke. And all that multiple tons of stone like spilled out onto the trail. And I didn't mention this, but the, those really big stones that ended up in the creek. Uh, the consultants believe that those actually bounced over the gabion baskets. And their analysis shows a bounce height of seventeen feet is not out of the question for those big stones. So it's like a really impressive, it's a really cool presentation, but I don't love that we had a trail at the bottom of it. So. I'm ready to answer any questions, but also I would love to hear if you have anything that you'd like us to be considering while we're thinking about alternatives. Yeah, just anything that you all have for me.
Brady?
Yeah, thank you for that. That's, I mean, just as someone who's been asking himself that question is just an interested person. I'm really curious to learn this, so thank you for that. I have observed that compliance to the closure isn't, is often, is certainly not absolute. And there's parking there. I mean, it's basically the definition of an attractive nuisance. And people just jump right over it and there's a beautiful trail and it seems fine. And so I guess my question is, first, my first question, and then I'll stop. I've got another one. But is, is like, what's your approach to that? Is there enforcement, specifically the climbing community? Bless their hearts, I'm one of them. I mean, that, that is the access to Polatnus Wall basically. And there are ways to get there that don't require you to go over the chain link fence, but it's much more of a hassle. And so climbers often just do that. And they're, they're used to going off trail anyway. And so I guess, yeah, like what would you say to the climbing community? And what would you say to the people who aren't complying? Is, is this an enforcement priority?
Yeah, it is. Uh, we put a trail camera up in early June and had it up for six weeks and we did count ninety-seven. Well, I think I was at least two of them because I went to take photos of for this presentation. So like in the nineties of people going back there. That was actually at the end of the fall. So that's people who went all the way and like into the danger zone, as it were. In terms of the climbing community, Lisa did, oh, Lisa's gone. Lisa did check in with our partners immediately after the technical presentation. So we've updated mountain projects. I mean, there are big scary signs. There's chain link fence, which is newer. Like we were getting very poor compliance originally. Um, so we have chain link fence now from basically wall to wall, the opening of the canyon. People still go around it unfortunately. Um, but in terms of the climbing community, what I would say to them would be, please honor the closure. Cause it's not just the you going back there. Like if you need to be rescued, how are you going to get rescued? We're putting rescuers at risk if they're going back across this as well. Coming down from Sugarloaf, it takes a much longer time to get there. Like there are all these other complicating factors. So I would say like to the public and to anybody who like really wants to get back there and really wants to access that to like, we're trying our best. We're doing our best. But it is an active and not safe area. So please honor the closure.
So plot, you're saying Polatnus Walls closed or just?
You just can't access it from the bottom. If you can come down, I'm not very well versed in that, but you can come down from Sugarloaf Road.
And there's other ways to go up from there that don't require you going over the chain link, but.
Interesting. Um, I'm unaware of that, but if you could let us know where those are, like we could maybe talk to the Rangers unless it's secret.
The double agent here. I mean, it's a really sweet place to go climbing and climbers are, climbers, I mean, this is, this is one of those things where, okay, climbers think they're special. They're not. However, they travel on dangerous slopes all day long and, and this isn't the only one. And it is, it's, this is a classic example of likelihood versus consequence. The likelihood on any given day for something catastrophic to happen is very low. And so for an individual climber, they're not too worried about it. But as, as managers, we have to be because there's people going to be there basically all the time. And the next time a big rock comes down, it's pretty likely it's going to squish somebody.
Yeah. I think it, you bring up an important point. There's like the, like the differential, like risk analysis in an individual has. Like the person who's bringing their grandma from Kansas, I'll say from Kansas, like I take my parents there. It's really nice and easy. But their level of risk and like exposure risk and hazard is much different than you who wants to go climbing. And like you're prepared for that and you're wearing a helmet and all that. And so I think that will be part of the conversation moving forward. It's like, what will access look like for these two pretty different visitor groups who have different kind of levels of risk tolerance? And are those compatible with each other?
Even at the status quo, the climbing community had to go up slabs that would never be approved for like regular public. And frankly, they were part of the hazard, you know, the, the gables were, the gabions were good. But there were the occasional loose rock that could have been triggered by a climber on the public underneath. And so I guess this is all to say I'm very, um, I, I know you're up against something really hard. And, um, I don't have the answer, but I do know that, that that place is a really sweet place to go climbing in the wintertime. And people are going to still do it. And if, if someone can jump the fence, they will. And it's just a matter of, yeah, I don't, I don't have a great answer for you. I, I was hopeful that the eastern alignment, even though it would. May, require a lot more engineering, just intuitively. I mean, I'm not a geologist, I haven't done a study. Seems like it would be better. All things considered than the west alignment, but then you add in lord knows how many millions of dollars to put in steel structures. In, in stone that would be eventually destroyed and need to be recreated, you know, so I, it's tricky. I, I also think that if you have a viewing area at point A or B, there will be people who continue on. It's just human nature. They want to go. I mean, half the, the fun is getting really close to the falls. And so people will continue doing that. And so I think, you know, you've got a liability issue, but then you've got a human behavior issue. So I'm not telling you that you don't need to know. I'm just, just.
As somebody who tries to design and manage trails for people to stay on them, I'm acutely aware of when people are like, great trail, off they go. Off the end of it. Um, I am hopeful if we're able to maybe move the viewing platform in the congregation area closer to the canyon wall. That we could manipulate the drainage enough that it would discourage a lot of people. I don't think we're ever going to discourage everybody from going to the falls, but you know, we're talking about like, yep, lowering the likelihood, lowering the risk, lowering the number of people. Maybe in these dangerous areas. And you know, similar to skiing or snowshoeing, like making sure that what's, you know, what's above you and what's below you. That maybe we can have some separation with the climbing access. And the other thing with the climbing access is nobody from open spaces ground truthed what the access looks like. We have not gone past the gabion walls to the keyhole or anything.
You mean, mean currently?
Currently, yeah. Yeah, we saw the gabion, gabion walls and what happened and we said, we'll just hang out here for, for now. So nobody has from open spaces actually hiked what was the climbing access.
Where is, is the Polatnus Wall? Where does the open space boundary end? Is that on Forest Service land up there? It's always hard to figure out where the heck.
I have to get back to you on that. I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks for all that information. I think the community is probably hungry to, to get light of all of this as well. Because I know there's very little understanding of why it's closed. Personally, I haven't minded that people are not doing U-turns on, on the road and there's a bunch, you know, the parking lots are full. But like as Brady said, that's a really nice wall to climb on. I haven't been there in any years. But it is a really beautiful wall to climb on in the, in the winter. But I have, I haven't missed it, but I've found other things to do like ski during the winter. But, but I, I could see why a lot of people would try to find a way to access it. And, uh, but, but yeah, if, if you can just somehow get this information out to the community, I think it would help their understanding.
Yeah. Yeah, we have purpose, I mean, not purposely withheld information. We wanted to get as many facts as we could from this geotechnical analysis. To be able to speak accurately and truthfully about what we're up against, you know? Are we looking at six months? Are we looking at one year? Can we move stuff around? Can we have an emergency seat in where it is? Until further notice, it is closed until we get this other second half of the analysis. But I think we can do a, now that you all know this information and it is public, we do plan on releasing more of it to the public and helping them understand why it's closed.
Thank you. Yeah. And I, I think following up on that point about public notice. It's a great opportunity to start educating the public before a decision is made. So they understand what we're up against. And you, you know, you kind of avoid the situation where, you know, somebody reads that. And you, you know, you kind of avoid the situation where, you know, somebody reads the headline and goes, damn, open space just closed another, right? So, you know, start explaining this in very clear terms. Hey, there were rocks that were five by 10, you know, and that happens to weigh 18,000 pounds. And it flew to a height of 17 feet and could have taken the head off of a blue whale. You know, like this is really serious stuff, people. And, and letting people really understand this way ahead of time. And so, you know, you start building some, you know, community understanding that we care about a trail that 261,000 people a year like to use. But we also realize that with that volume of visitation and what's above, you know, we're just, it's amazing that nobody's been killed yet. Right? Like I don't mind hearing things in those very clear terms because I think people need to hear it that way. So they don't kind of get too bollocked up in all the, you know, geological speak or whatever, you know, could be in the press release. So I would suggest make it plain, make it dramatic. Let people understand why this very big decision is, is in the works right now. Another couple of things. One, is there any kind of weather and moisture, freeze thaw kind of cycle issue with when it's really dangerous? Can, can there be temporal closures if there, you know, places where people might be allowed in for climbing access? Or there are going to be days where we're like, look, you know, there's just too much moisture and the temperature is hovering around freezing. We can't have you in here.
That's something that we are discussing. They, the two climatic factors that affect the hazards is precipitation on the slope. And then the kind of precipitation or the way the water moves down the slope. And we did, I looked back at the weather, we got like a very modest amount of snow, but there was some freeze and thaw that happened before this event. But also the flood, it rained however many inches and we didn't see nearly this magnitude. So it's like kind of mismatched in my, like, how, how would we do that? I think if we did anything temporal, it would likely be a little bit more of a sledgehammer of like it's closed from October till, you know, freeze and thaw threats are over. We're not quite sure like that, but that is something that we are exploring.
So it stabilizes once it gets really cold. We think.
We think, maybe I'm, I'm not sure. It's something I'll ask the consultants follow up on. Yeah.
Okay. And then my last piece is just, and, and you know, this is something you see at ski resorts and I'm not sure there's any precedent for it. And public open space is owned by cities. But you know, possibly a skull and crossbones gate. You know, I don't know if your grandparents from Kansas are going to want to walk through a spring loaded swinging gate that says, you know, once you pass this gate, you can die. Right? Like that's what it says in, in steep canyons all over the American West in the ski industry. And you're kind of signing your release when you walk through that gate with the big skull and crossbones on it. And that way, instead of people, you know, criminalizing access, you know, you're saying to the people, you're at your own risk.
I really thought you were going to say, can we use explosives like they do for controlled avalanche balls?
No.
Okay.
But I mean, I, I just think it might be worth thinking about that if, if you're going to have scofflaws. Like maybe make it possible for them to do it without being scofflaws, but make it really clear that this is not a safe place for people to go.
Yeah, there, there is a permanent sign that does say you could die if you climb on the rocks, I think in no uncertain terms. But that hasn't, you know, there's still 260,000 people who go there.
And I was just going to add, kind of this whole conversation, Hillary's done a fabulous job kind of summarizing that. And just to kind of further iterate that the Boulder Falls trail area is closed. In fact, mountain project, like she mentioned, identifies as temporary closed. Kind of Brady, to your point about the climbing areas, the different walls, the different routes, like a lot of those areas transition more into forest service. And so the climbing areas are still open because there's multiple ways to get there. And like you said, some of the climbers don't even go through the Boulder Falls. There's other climber access trails. And this kind of gets into like, earlier this year, we talked about the climbing access trail project that Lisa's been working on. So it's really a question of, is it a managed trail that we manage, you know, versus an undesignedated or just a social trail or climber access trail? So there are, if you go out there and as climbers, you know, there's multiple ways to get to those areas. We're just saying that, you know, the, the managed trail that is designated is no longer open because of these safety reasons. But Harmon, you're absolutely correct. I mean, there is inherent risk in outdoor recreation. There's governmental immunity. There's the Colorado Skier Act, all those different things. Anywhere, anytime you step outside, weather, geology, wildlife, all these things that stuff, you know, pose a risk. So what we're trying to illustrate to the community is this managed area is no longer open because we cannot safely manage that risk. And that's what we'll have to look, look at moving forward to if we can have some level of safety. You know, but even with our managed trails, there's other things we can't protect against. So. But for climbers and other, you know, there are routes open and other ways to achieve that. They're not managed, designated by us per se, but.
Thanks Jeff. Anybody else have, Brady have any follow up?
Well, just someone died there yesterday, right? Or was found this morning, east side of the Boulder Falls. Do we have presumably not rockfall?
No, that was not rockfall.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you very much for a two-faced presentation. Maybe you got the order wrong. Maybe you got it right, but we learned a lot and appreciate it.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks Hillary. I'm going to get you to nine o'clock on time because I don't think you've pulled it off yet. So I've got five director updates.
All right. Keep going.
And we've, we've got a minute and a half.
Michelle needs, needs something that she can, some laurels to rest on. So keep going.
I just want to, I think we might've put this out to you, but there's the GetPart implementation project is complete. And we are having a little bit of a celebration and ribbon cutting at nine AM, I believe we're meeting on, is it Monday? No, Wednesday and nine 30 ribbon cutting. So if you want to come out and see what that site plan ended up doing, we will be there to explain it and show people it. So we'd love to have you there.
Dan, real quick, is that next to East Boulder Community Center?
Yes. I, yes. Yeah, that's the site. I'm not so sure where exactly. We're asking people to park. Is it at the community center or?
The best place to park is on the south side of the park where the dog park is, if you're familiar, East Boulder Community Park. So not near the rec center entrance, but as.
As you come around.
Comes around. And we have a new trail, little spike that would go back.
And that's part of the project, that new golden rod trail that takes you in. So yeah, if you can make it.
I'd love to.
And just a reminder that a field trip for the board is planned on September 8th. We're going to be out at Saw Hill Ponds, see the new trailhead as well as the nature discovery area. A lot of cool stuff, a lot of innovation there. If you're free that day, I believe it's like three to five. Love to have you out there. So that's it. And it's nine.
Wow.
Good job, Dan. Thanks, everybody.
All right. Without a gavel, I'll knuckle us out. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.